Calling to order, the Monday, February 5th, 2018 -- 2005th -- Monday, February 5th, 2018, Planning Commission Meeting.
You should kind of be in a different place.
I know. Ms. G, can you please take the role?
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Keats?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
And Mr. Krasner is absent.
The first item on our agenda is to hear from Andrea Reese. Mr. Stoddard, are you going to introduce her to us?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Chair. So, Planning Commission, as you may remember, work plan item coming out of your retreat, I think from last year, was to build more of a speaker series for the Planning Commission. And the idea is to expand the commission's and the community's knowledge in general about planning items, preferably before they become a topic on the agenda, that it allows for that time of discussion and conversation about what's the right place and how does that fit into the context of the city without so much of a project spotlight on it. Ms. Reese is a member of the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust. She and I met while the city was working on the Parks for People Plan, which, as you may know, is the replacement and update for the city's Parks and Open Space Chapter of the comprehensive plan. In tonight's presentation, Contemporary Topics in Land Conservation, I don't want to steal the thunder, but it is about innovative uses and how to bring about more open space and open space conservation, especially in places like Falls Church.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me here. I've never used a microphone like this, so I hope it's fine. Okay. I'm the Senior Land Conservationist at Northern Virginia Conservation Trust. I am sorry to say I'm not a resident of Falls Church. I live in Arlington. I've been there five years. I lived in Vienna before that, so I've been a neighbor sort of on two sides. And I've been glad of the chance through my work to get to know the city a little bit more. What I do on a daily basis is find opportunities to connect landowners and the resources that are in their care with land conservation policies, grant programs, tax incentives at the federal and state levels. And I've been in this field for about 12 years, working with organizations with a number of different specialties. This slideshow is mostly pictures, but I thought that I would put up some bullet points just to tell you what I'd like to talk about. First, to just emphasize that open space in developed areas is meaningful, and to give a little bit of the why, to note that the open space issues facing Falls Church are increasingly common, I think, around the region, but I think that your long-term strategy looks strong. And then to encourage that we try out some old and new tools for conservation. So, big picture view for a moment, talking about why, the why of land conservation. When you think of protected lands, it's easy to think only of big places, things like Yosemite, things like Central Park, iconic wildernesses and national parks. But land conservation isn't just about protecting those big places, the astonishing places that you have to drive and fly to get to. And I like to start with that, at least to say, hey, we can do this here, because we all have a sense of place, of where we come from and why it matters to us, and that is very local. A yard or a park where we play or where our kids play, a favorite view, and land conservation helps sustain those places that matter, even if they're small. So, land conservation is also about historic places, scenic places, farmland, wetland, urban forest patches. And these things are actually very much woven into the laws that provide the framework for land conservation. So, it isn't like trying to work in a developed area is trying to get away with anything in the field of land conservation. And habitat in urban areas can be surprisingly robust. Nearby nature is important for our quality of life and our physical and mental health. And we see news articles on these topics, I'd say, every few weeks. And so remembering those matters and seeing that the research now supports those also gives us a reason to pursue land conservation in developed areas. And that's really how Northern Virginia Conservation Trust got its start. We were founded in 1994, actually, as a Fairfax County-only group, and then rapidly expanded. So now we work in the counties and cities, more or less from Harper's Ferry to Fredericksburg. It includes, of course, urban, suburban, and rural places. It's home to about 2.5 million people. We work with private landowners and we partner with local governments. And because we're nonprofit, our funding comes from donations and from grants from our public partners. We have a staff of eight and 16 directors on our board. And we've protected only one property in Falls Church, that is the Scout Building, as many of you may know, on Spring Street back in 2008. To date, we've protected 155 properties around the region, and the red dots on the map illustrate where most of those locations are. So there's the track record for the trust and a bit about why we do what we do. And I'd like to turn now to the present and future to look at the needs and goals in the community and the tools we might be able to use to meet them. So we're looking for answers in this picture. A lot of the questions about open space that are facing Falls Church are ones in which you are not alone. How to balance competing needs for a limited amount of land? How to buffer and protect stream corridors? How to tackle the loss of mature trees during redevelopment of single-family homes? How to make the best use of finite resources, particularly in an area with such high property values? It seems the common answer to a lot of these issues revolves around working with partners and keeping in mind the big goal, even as we work on small, approachable components along the way. And I think you already have the framework for this. As I mentioned, I think your strategy is strong. As Paul mentioned, I first got the chance to learn about some of these issues back when you were forming that chapter of the Open Space Plan. And it's a pleasure to look back and see where it is. I work all across, basically, the northern half of our region, and so it's nice to be able to turn my attention back to different localities and see what's happening and to see that this looks great. And to me, this map, your future parks map, shows a long-haul goal that looks very positive. You're expanding parks. You want to shore up the natural areas along streams. So many other localities, both in our region and elsewhere, are facing those exact questions and those exact goals. And so it looks to me like your strategies laid out in the comprehensive plan will help you get there. So I think what I'm trying to offer is NBCT's encouragement and partnership to say that we would love to help you find the right tools and ways to get there, particularly because when we're working in urban areas, it is very much about those incremental steps toward that overall strategic goal. I learned about -- a couple of months ago, I was at the National Land Conservation Conference and learned about an example that I wanted to share with you all, because I think you might find that it speaks to you in much the same way that I found it inspiring. So I was at the Land Trust Alliance Conference. I was listening to a presentation by a group from Cape Cod. And the concept that I wanted to share is spot restoration. Now, we may say Cape Cod, okay, we go on vacation there, but I think it bears some resemblance to Northern Virginia. It's a highly fragmented landscape. Many of the lots are already thoroughly divided and built out. The land values are very high. And so in that sense, that sounds familiar. And large-scale conservation work generally is not achievable there when we're talking about those gorgeous landscapes. Again, we think of Yosemite or very large regions. That is impossible there. And so planners and conservationists, they're upfront about that, and they look for the kinds of opportunities that fit the place. So the -- oop. Spot restoration is what they're calling, what they do. They also refer to this approach as undevelopment or finding pivot points, little places that would make a difference to try and restore or protect natural functions and public access in these very small locations. And they conveyed the message, when it comes to development, we need not accept the hand that we have been dealt, which I think is not an anti-development message. It means here are our resources, here are our space, what can we do with it? And to see the possibilities there. And they said that they are finding that this message resonates very much in the communities that they serve and that they are finding this to be a good strategic way forward. And so again, I think that that may have relevance for you all, to just look for small places to make a difference toward your overall strategy. But when we find these incremental opportunities, how do we take advantage of them? What are the nuts and bolts? The classic tools, the most essential, are of course acquisition and easements. And I will sort of breeze through those. I know that they may be familiar to some of you and not to others, and so that's part of what I wanted to provide in the handouts that I think are with everybody's packets. A public or private entity in acquisition, of course, can own the land to ensure that it's open space. Or in a conservation easement, the landowner can place conservation restrictions on the land to -- they'll be recorded in a deed and overseen by a third party, such as a land trust. And easements aren't the right choice for every land or every piece of -- or every piece of land or every landowner. And because they're perpetual, they aren't always the right answer in a place like Falls Church, which is trying to maximize opportunities over time for just the same reasons that we talked about a moment ago. It's about seeing all the possibilities. So when you want to keep future options open, easements may not be the right answer. And I'm happy to talk in more detail with those who want to know more about them, but I just want to say I'm not here to push easements as the only solution. At the same time, I hope to illustrate that classic vanilla options are not the only ones. What are some creative approaches, some possible new resources, and some ways to combine them all to make progress toward the goal of more open space for Falls Church? Sometimes landowners have a vision for their land that expresses their sense of pride in the community, as well as their love for their land, but they don't want to take action right away. And in those instances, working with landowners on options or rights of first refusal or life estates can be terrifically helpful. And often, we think about these as tools that may not be used in this side of real estate, may not be used in the conservation side of real estate. But I wanted to emphasize that they can be useful in conservation planning for folks who are trying to figure out their options for conservation buyers, whether that be a land trust or a municipality, that are taking time to assemble funding, to figure out their options. Using options or rights of first refusal can be a terrific way to sort of buy time and figure that out for both landowner and conservation group. These options depend very much on community connections, on understanding landowners' goals, learning about where opportunities might arise, on connecting the dots with the civic plans, and on bringing together the resources and people to make it happen. And for that reason, I wanted to say that building these connections, having the chance to sit face-to-face like this tonight, can be incredibly helpful, because you all are in your communities, knowing what the opportunities may be. And then my position with the trust can be to help bring the resources into play to help make some things happen. So this is why raising the -- just connecting these dots can be helpful. I also wanted to mention the prospect of transfer of development rights. In talking with Paul, I learned that there's maybe some interest in the city in that topic. And I wanted to offer an example from elsewhere within NBCT's service area. Stafford County, a few years ago, and it was a very different environment, but Stafford County took a chance on developing a transfer of development rights ordinance. Then a couple of years went by. They didn't really see much happening with that. And we just learned last week that they have in their first set of applications for transfer of development rights for exactly the purpose that they were hoping that this might achieve, to protect a highly sensitive natural area. And so taking a chance on that experiment, looks like it will pan out in this instance. Because it's so new, I can't say a lot about where it's going, but at least so far, it's promising, and that experiment at least looks like it's bearing fruit. Now, talking about sort of different tools we might use, I also want to say that allowing conservation options to play out over time can be very helpful. One of the trust's success stories is a property in the -- actually, this isn't it. This is it. It's the Falls Church part of Fairfax County. And it happened this way. The landowner always wanted to make sure her property wouldn't be developed. The development from Tysons was sort of spreading toward her. And so she put her property in a conservation easement, but then she decided to leave the land to NBCT in her will, with the understanding that the trust would then convey the land to Fairfax County to become a public park. And today, we continue to hold the easement. We keep close involvement with the park planning process. The park isn't open to the public yet, but it is all playing out how the landowner envisioned. This is over the course of about a decade and a half. And it'll soon be that neighborhood amenity, that walkable park for the neighborhood that she had in mind. So keeping that long view, I think, I mean, it's hard, right? But it is worth it, and that is a role that the trust can play also. So a landowner's long-time horizon can be an asset. And we can talk about other landowner goals and interests that can be assets. And here, I want to turn to the topic of development and how that can be compatible with conservation and open space. When you want so much to bring people to a site and to a new development, pocket parks can be so essential, I think. Places where people can -- know that they are welcome to be, it's unscheduled, unprogrammed, unstructured, but that kind of social center. That's actually my son in the center of this one. And so I have a bit of a personal interest in sites like this. But I very much encourage you to continue talking with developers about pocket parks during site redevelopment, during the planning for plazas and great streets that we see in your map of future parks and in future open space. And again, these places are small, but they matter so much, because it can provide even a tiny amount of nature in folks' surroundings that makes a difference to their social well-being and their health, where folks are welcome to be outside, where kids can run around and play. These places matter. And the trust has several times had very positive partnerships, actually, with developers, where one section of a site is developed and one section is set aside as public open space. So we are happy to continue those. In fact, we have a couple that are in process right now, and we're always happy to help see what role we can play if a developer may be interested. I'd also like to touch briefly on the topic of residential redevelopment, especially the loss of mature trees during redevelopment of single-family homes. The trust gets a lot of calls from concerned residents all around Northern Virginia, wondering what they can do. And I suspect that we're in the same boat as the commission and the city staff, trying to figure that out. The standard tools of land conservation, acquisition and easements, actually unfortunately are not very helpful in this case, particularly for smaller residential properties. But there's ever more research coming out that proves that retaining mature trees helps reduce water pollution and need TMDL requirements. And so it seems that this is not that we will have to figure out how to crack. It's my understanding that there's been a couple of bills in the General Assembly, I think, that aren't going anywhere yet, but that are looking at, are there ways that we can restructure the public policy incentives around this question? And so my hope is that as more folks speak to this issue, it may be possible to find that public policy solution, make it easier for everybody, landowners, builders, permiters, everybody, to do the right thing and maintain mature trees. And I'd like to close on the topic of funding, particularly public grant funds for land conservation. This has, for a very long time, been an uphill battle for Northern Virginia as compared to the rest of the state. Market value of land is high. It's easy for decision-makers to look elsewhere and figure they can get more bang for their buck. But I think exactly what bang for the buck they are trying to get is shifting. I think that public grant makers are looking at how to make their funds more available to urban projects, to make a difference in more people's lives, basically, to focus on more concentrated groups of people who need public access, who need those environmental services just as much as anybody else does. So some examples. The Virginia Outdoors Foundation has begun specifically seeking projects that increase access to -- that increase public access to open space, as opposed to their historical focus, which has always been on very large tracts of privately-owned rural land. And so I think that's an interesting change. We also hear that the Virginia Land Conservation Foundation, they're between grant rounds right now, but what we hear is that they are looking at how to improve the criteria by which they analyze grant applications so that urban areas will stand more of a chance. And I find that encouraging. I think, to me, this looks like we have increasing resources and that by working with partners, we'll be able to take advantage of some of these opportunities. So to sum up, I hope I've been able to illustrate for you not only why Northern Virginia Conservation Trust does the work that we do, but also our views on some common challenges facing our region. And I think we have viable tools, both existing tools and new tools, new models, that we can put to use. And I do think there's that rising tide of interest in this kind of work in conservation in densely developed areas. I think Falls Church has a good plan, a good strategy, and we'd be very pleased to be a partner and a resource for you. So I would be happy to answer questions or take down any notes for follow-up, and thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you very much for your time. I think you're correct about what's happening here in Falls Church. Not only is it a challenge for us to deal with land conservation, but also we do have a very high level of interest in it, in the community, and it's trying to balance those two things in our very, very limited available land. So that's one of the reasons why we're trying to have this process and to hear more about things before they come before us, so we can begin to understand the mechanisms to protect these things. I'm not sure I, you know, have answers or up to this point, and it sounds like maybe they're not forthcoming right now for the mature trees issues. That's something we're dealing with on a monthly basis, unfortunately. And I don't understand, actually, the transfer of development rights part, but I want to, you know, turn it over to the commissioners before you answer my question specifically. But really, thank you very much. It was constructive and helpful. If anyone else wants to make comments or has questions.
Like blanking at me. Yeah, thank you. We tried a situation approximately back when I was on city council, so that has to be about 12 years ago, for the property on the corner of North Oak and Lincoln. And it just -- we had many, many meetings, and it just didn't seem to be financially correct for the family. And so my way of thinking, so much of the conservation easement, and perhaps I'm wrong, you know, comes from families who have a lot of money and can afford to do that and perhaps write it off or whatever happens, you know, financially that goes with it. And so that is, you know, a problem, I think, for situations like that. But you were showing a picture in Arlington. What are the smallest-type areas that you've done anything with?
Oh, sure. I would --
For small?
Yes. I would say that -- well, I should say first that we do have some very highly-divided properties, but about half of the 155 properties that I mentioned are an acre or less. And so we do -- there's no property too small for us to take a look at, basically. And then how it sort of shakes out with what conservation value we can find there, that's harder to predict. But I would say that the smallest project that we have done in the past few years since I've been on board was half an acre.
If I could, just to jump in very quickly, I think we can probably follow up with an informative memo about sort of what transfer of development rights is, but at a higher level, what we're trying to do is take advantage of economic forces. As a scheme, what it does is that it's shifting property rights from one parcel to another. So in a sense, that idea of having to buy somebody out doesn't really happen anymore, because when we buy your development rights, we might sell them to somebody else. So the city becomes this vehicle that becomes, in some way, sort of revenue-neutral, that any costs that go into buying an easement are then recouped later when those development rights are sold to somebody else. We can write up a memo that describes how this works, but I think a lot of the tools that were described, things like life estates, allowing people to stay in their homes for the time that's right for them, but this idea of right of first refusal, these are all things that, put together, can allow the city to fund things at essentially a zero cost when you look at it on a planning horizon, but allow for people to live in their homes comfortably and see something happen with their property when they move on and have some level of control about what happens to it through the language of the easement and who they decide to do it over to.
I don't understand the mechanics. I certainly am not asking you to write a memo about it, but if you give me access to some or the commission to some links or something that's out there already, you guys got your hands full. So that would be appreciated, though. I'd like to learn a little bit more about it, again, proactively.
I'd be happy to help provide that, if, sort of from the land conservation perspective, if that would be helpful.
Terrific, because I don't understand the actual mechanisms and how it works, and something to be able to think about as we go forward. So that would be helpful. Do you have any other questions?
I was going to say, you know, we have the mature tree thing is a challenge. Tonight, I think we have a couple of subdivisions that'll probably whack a couple of mature trees. But we have like this specimen tree program, which is cool, but it's very altruistic. Basically, you say, I've got this tree, it meets some sort of qualifications, then you get sealed and approved, but all it really does is limit your ability to do anything around the tree. I've always thought if there was some upside to that, whether it's a tax issue or some credit somewhere else, or something, that you would get more people willing to do that, because it's asking a lot to say, hey, here's a tree and I'll protect it at all costs. But if you had some upside, I think you'd get a lot more participation. But I don't know what -- I don't know, maybe people at the state level kicking around ideas, but I think that program could be the basis for something if you could tag some sort of upside.
I agree with you. I've tried to prod our Arlington staff contacts about that topic several times, and I think it's tough, but I think the interest, as you said, is there. I think that looks like a way.
Because like some people, hey, I don't have any plans, and here's an old tree, and I might go for that specimen tree thing, but, you know, I'd hate for like 20 years from now to have this, you know, go to sell my house and have it lose value, because that part of my yard is off limits. But if somehow I was benefiting from it, then maybe I would go ahead and do it, especially if I didn't have any plans to do anything in the future.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned incentives. I mean, if there's the correct incentive, I think you can at least shift some people. Not everyone.
Like if it falls on my house, you buy me a new house.
There's one incentive.
I think that's called insurance.
Yeah, good luck dealing with insurance.
One thing we've brainstormed is if there could be a flexibility in setback requirements on yards. So if a specimen tree, if there's a desire to preserve it and it pushes a setback on one direction, could you provide relief in another? And I think how you structure that, you want to be careful about the look and feel of the neighborhood, but it might be that you can achieve that public purpose of maintaining tree canopy while leaving the property owner whole, in terms of what they had access to.
Yeah, it's a good idea. It is.
I didn't come up with it.
We do still have some substantially large lots with historic homes in the city, too. Tallwood, which is on Route 7, and Ohio sets up Lincoln and Great Falls. I mean, but there's been talk at different times of easements for both of them, but you kind of get to a point where they're almost, but it doesn't happen. So it's kind of -- and there's a couple other properties that are very large. So there's definitely, we definitely have property that we should be trying to conserve.
And we were thinking of a life conservancy by another property at one time, but it was not acceptable to the owners.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, times change. We can come back. We have folks who, you know, a letter from 10 years ago was in our files, and it might even be some of these landowners at the sites you've mentioned. You know, and then they come back and they're interested, or the kids come back and they're interested, and that's okay. Part of what we promise as a land trust is to be stewarding these properties for as long as we can exist, and we have to prove that we have the financial wherewithal to keep it going and the sound practices. And so we're here for the long haul and willing to come back and stick around.
While you're here, I'd also like to chime in and say thank you for all the work you're doing, because I know in a lot of areas, I'm particularly familiar with Waterford Foundation. My daughter works for this Howard Powell Brown, and she lives in Waterford. But I know of all the great things they've done out there for conservancy and have huge pieces of property, which has been really, really wonderful.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I really appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thanks. Yep, thank you.
I forgot to take out my question.
The next item is adoption of the agenda. It strikes me we should have done that before the speaker series, but can I get a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
Hold on a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ms. G, do we have any petitions for those items not on the agenda?
I have none.
Okay. We have no old business. And the first item of new business, Act 7A, is preliminary and final approval for the 900 final approval for the 900 Lincoln Avenue property.
Commissioners, good evening. This is my first time to be over in this part of the city for a planning commissioners meeting, so.
Our first time to?
Oh, I thought you had already done this once.
No, no, we're all rookies. We were at the community center one time.
Okay, community center. Well, great. Well, I like the more intimate setting, you know, where we're all around at a table. So this is fun, an adventure. I have two, or we have two subdivisions before you tonight. The first is 900 Lincoln Avenue. Bob Bennington, who you will hopefully remember addressing us back on the beginning of December, I believe it was the 4th of December, and you had some concerns, and so we sat down with the applicant and tried to brainstorm some ideas. But just to summarize the staff report, we are, as a staff, recommending approval. There's a couple of items that need to be administratively handled so that we can get the final plat ready for signature within 60 days, and so we'll be working on that with Bob. And the notes from the fourth are that one of your concerns was that Lot B may not fit the character of the neighborhood, so we just tried to brainstorm some ideas, and I think you'll find the proposal interesting tonight. And Bob has a slide presentation of the rendering that you requested. So why don't we let Bob go ahead, and how does he advance the slide?
I think I'll figure it out.
Okay.
First of all, good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
I can see y'all good.
Welcome back.
There you go.
It'd be nice to Bill have that full view.
Yeah.
At five, we'll start the presentation.
My first slide is just the blueprints or the prints that have been submitted to y'all. I guess the first thing I wanted to point out is one of the considerations of Mr. Krasner, I believe, was the lot size in the rear. And for the home that we're proposing to build for ourselves in the front, we really don't want to make any concessions to the lot size. We feel that we've kept in the requirements of the zoning setbacks, et cetera, but we understand the concerns of building a long, narrow building. So we've proposed to take, I believe it's an additional 14 feet off of one end, which would make it more of a square-shaped house, not so much of a long rectangular townhouse that y'all were concerned about, and we feel that would blend in better with the neighborhood and, you know, help the concerns that the neighbors are in.
Didn't you also add a garage so that?
Well, there's a garage in the drawings that I'll show you, which does not add on to the size there. So if I can do this right, yeah. Some of the issues that were mentioned at the last meeting, I wanted to go over and, you know, straighten up. Mr. Krasner was saying that there was no pipe stems in the existing neighborhood. As a matter of fact, there are, maybe I can find it here. Yes, they point out where we are, where the pipe stems are. Which one do you all want to look at? The bigger one behind you?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, please.
All right. This is where 900 is, right here, and we have two existing pipe stems right here. So there are some in the neighborhood. So Mr. Krasner was also one of the lots to be of equal size. With the pipe stem being included in the rear lot, they come to within 60 square feet of each other, so they are in essence the same size. Like I said, with the building, the home more of a sort of a long shape, more of a square, towards a square shape, I believe that it blends in with the character of the existing neighborhoods, and he also wanted the two homes to relate to each other. And through my, I had my architect draw up some sketches of a house that would fit on this property. And first of all, this is going to be the house that we're going to put on the front lot. This is our dream home. Thank you. These are the sketches of what could be proposed for the rear lot. You'll notice that on the left side, the front elevation, you do have the front door. There's a front porch there also, and then you have the rear elevation. To one concern I think you all had was like a functionality of a house that was that narrow. Oops. These are a couple floor plans that he drew up. Bruce says something about garage, we actually on the left side, right side here, no, I'm sorry, left side, there is a garage there. I think there's, you know, ample living area, kitchen, dining area, you have a nice foyer with the front porch, even have a mudroom and a powder room down on that end upstairs, two more, two, three bedrooms? Right. And then, actually, my architect drew up a fourth bedroom upstairs, but I'm not interested in putting a third floor on, because I don't think the height requirements will allow that. But with a basement, we could easily have, you know, an additional bedroom. So you have a large house, and it's very functional, as shown there. So I think, you know, the type of house that you could put back there is, you know, just because it's not so deep, you know, there's a lot of architectural features that would make it interesting and very functional. Two houses being oriented towards the street. I showed you the front door being, you know, located on the front side of the house towards the street. And I showed you the home or the example of the home with concept designs and sketches. And then I think a main issue, which was just brought up, was location of trees. And I took some pictures around the lot. This is looking towards the rear of the lot on the left side. The tree that's actually in the grass is a mulberry tree, which is not a very nice tree to have. So while we're living there and not building on the rear lot, that tree will stay there, but it'll come down when the other house is built. It's not in very good shape, so it wouldn't be anything to attempt to save. The one that's in the grass there is a dogwood, which is, has a lot of disease in it. We're going to try to just enjoy it as much as we can until it dies off. The one in the back corner is a large walnut. It's located about five feet off the property line, and it's not around the house, and the pipe stem will be coming up that side. This is kind of looking towards the middle of the, and as you can see, a lot of the trees are right on the edge of the property. They're not, you know, where the house would be, they would have to be taken down. The only ones that would have to be taken down for the house are those two smaller ones. And so we feel that we're, you know, protecting what trees that are there. So I guess that's really what I have to show you all, and I know you all can have some more questions, so I'm here to answer them.
Well, first of all, thank you. We gave you a hard time last time you were here.
Not a hard time. I mean, you all were expressing your concerns, and I understand that.
But what I really do want to, I don't know what the comments are going to be from the remainder of the commissioners, I really appreciate you taking the time to make some adjustments. I think that my concern specifically, and you mentioned Mr. Krasner a couple of times, I think you addressed those very reasonably. I thought the house was just out of proportion in terms of the length versus the width, and this looks to me to be a much better solution to the wish to develop that second parcel.
I think it's just a much more appealing home also.
Yeah, these renderings are very nice. I mean, this was, I think, exactly what I was hoping to get, was just some sense of how it would work, not, you know, scaled drawings or anything like this or anything more specific. So for me personally, this addresses a lot of the concerns. I like to hear about the trees, that the ones that you're going to be removing are not of the nature that we are concerned about, the big specimen trees and the very, very mature trees, and that just seems to be fortuitous that they fall in the right places on your property.
Right.
So I'm going to open up to the other commissioners, but I just, I do want to thank you. You were very responsive to our requests and to our issues, and I appreciate that very much.
Sure, thanks.
Turn it over to what anybody else wants to say about it.
I do have a question for staff. In the staff memo under public improvements, it says, "Public Works staff have indicated that no new sidewalk construction is needed as no sidewalks exist on this side of the street." It's true. Just curious, though, how does this differ from the Sycamore Street subdivision that we had a year ago where there was no sidewalk there, but staff was recommending that there be a sidewalk?
Well, this falls under the jurisdiction of Public Works, and that was their determin- determination. Jason Witzman, you know, said pretty much that he had no plans.
I know the Sycamore, when they talked about the safe routes of school, which, I don't know if that would apply here, I don't know if you remember that name.
Right, but that was still planned there, you know, as far as.
That's fine, just tell me what they were.
They really didn't need it. Didn't go anywhere.
What it suggests to me, and I mentioned this at the time on the Sycamore Street, is that I think it'd be good if the city had kind of some kind of a policy. I think it would help the planning commission, because right now it kind of looks like it's take each one as it comes along, right? This one, no, this one, yes. And so I think it would be helpful to have some kind of generic.
Tried to raise the issue.
If I may, in the subdivision ordinance, there is a requirement for sidewalk construction within residential districts, and that requirement is that there needs to be sidewalk at least on one side of the street. In the case of Lincoln Avenue, there is a sidewalk existing on the other side of the street, so there's nothing in the code that would require a sidewalk as part of this.
I'll just add, it's unfortunate because the one side of the street where it does exist, there's every obstacle you can imagine.
It's terrible. It really is terrible. Yeah, I agree.
Rather useless.
We've actually watched ladies with baby carriages have to walk around the poles, push their carriages out in the street, which is, it's pretty sad.
Very narrow sidewalks.
Right. That's all I had.
I'm just looking at the sidewalk thing.
No, I do appreciate the sketches, too, because I think before when you were showing us the box, I still think, and I know you showed the layout, I still think it's not going to be a layout that everyone would like, but at least that you showed how it worked, and I think by putting a porch on the front, it gives it a little bit more depth, so I think that helped to flesh it out for us.
It just adds a lot of character to it, and with a couple of bump outs also, you know, like bay window bump outs, it definitely does add a lot of character.
You probably don't need, I mean, the sketch, the sketch in our packet showed like six bump outs. I don't know if you need that many, but having some on there and having the porch at least will give it some depth from the outside.
And again, we're not here to, you know.
No, I know, but we asked, you had said that you could build a nice house in that narrow, and the sketches did show that it would look really good from the outside, so that was good to have.
All right. Yeah, I mean, these subdivisions are, to my opinion, largely administrative, and I think unfortunately I would add. And you really did, you met our requests and adjusted accordingly, so I'm.
I have a couple of my share. One is, and maybe it's for staff, but the sketches are cool, but is that, like, could someone still come in and build a really wide, narrow house to the lot line? Is this actually binding?
It is binding, or at least what I was told was that if you put it on the front page of the plat, that it is binding, and they cannot, because that was a concern of mine, it was like, okay, I can make you concessions.
Sure.
But then Joe Blow comes behind me, and then he does it.
Well, and I'm sure that the design, as it's just sketches, that's not binding, but the actual building envelope I was curious about. And then, I mean, like Russ said, I don't think we have much control. I mean, in an ideal world, if we had more control, I would say, you know, make that back lot a little bit deeper, and I totally understand why you don't want to, because you've got your house, your new house planned out, it fits right there, and if you squeeze that in, you lose it. So I totally get that, and so I won't have any criticism of your efforts. It's more of the whole pipe stem world out there. So I think that, I guess I'd be remiss, any interest in a conservation easement or?
That was the last thing I wanted to hear, was her in front of me.
But yeah, I mean, I.
You know, that's, really, that's, I mean, my wife is, she's, we don't have any family to pass stuff on to, and she's thought about doing stuff like that, so that could be an idea. Because like I said, we're not going to sell this property until probably 10 years down the road, but then you don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. I understand that. But we want to enjoy what's there.
Right.
And then, but that is for future.
Sure. But yeah, I don't have any.
Any big issue.
I don't have anything else either.
Excellent. All right. Do we have, Ms. G, any public speaker slips on this?
Unfortunately, I do not have speaker slips with me, but I have one person, Brittany Sakata, who would like to speak on this issue.
Okay.
So if you would give your name and address, and then your remarks, please.
Mr. Chair, if I could, this, I'm sorry, this item is advertised as a public hearing, so if we could formally open it as such, just to make it clear for the record, I think that would help.
Okay. I'm formally opening this topic up to a public meeting.
I formally accept. Thank you. Good evening, Brittany Sakata, 402 Northwest Street. My house backs up to 900 Lincoln, and I raised a lot of these points about a month and a half ago when we were here, and I just wanted to reiterate them. I don't know if we can pull up the map of the existing, it's on the presentation, the existing neighborhood.
Keyboard there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want like the?
Yeah, that one's perfect. Thank you.
Do you want?
No, not necessary. Thank you, though. So the two pipe stems he was referring to, the homes were built back in the 80s, maybe early 90s, so that was a long time ago, and my understanding is that was sort of a different developmental phase of the city. But you can see when you look at the houses, it's mostly Cape Cod's, and nothing's over two stories. Most of them are either split levels, mine's a Cape Cod, most are even one and a half stories. The one immediately to the left of me that also backs up to this property is a split foyer, and so it's, I guess, two stories at the most, doesn't have an attic. And so you can see that my concern with the location of this home is it's literally like right smack dab in the middle of all of those backyards. It's like if you were to stick, you know, if these were all Cape Cod's and we're all Cape Cod's, and you just stick a big, long rectangle home in the back, and I appreciate that he's tried to make it a little more box shape, but the renderings show that it's clearly very much a rectangle still. And we have two 100-plus-foot tulip poppers right on that property line, and I have to think that they will, they won't survive, you know, their roots won't survive once that whole backyard is dug up and turned into a home. So, you know, I. So, you know, I think the point last time that it just doesn't fit in the character of the neighborhood is still, still the case. You know, I appreciate that, you know, he wants to develop the lot, it looks like there's ultimately going to be two very large homes on the lot. Even the new design that he's building is much larger than anything in the neighborhood right now. And so I would just, I would just encourage the commission to, I don't know what your options are frankly, but I would just, that's my understanding. I just feel like, you know, in speaking with my neighbor who's elderly immediately to my left, he had the same concerns, both of our properties touch on this one, so we just want that known.
Mr. Ladisca, may I ask?
You formally may.
Yeah, a question. So you're afraid that 30 feet is still going to kill those trees on the property line?
Well, they're over 100-foot tulip poplar trees. I have to think that their root system is not, does not, and ours are literally right on the line, so ours are like right here. So I mean, I can't imagine that it won't have some detriment.
And to be clear, during construction, usually, most of the yard is regraded in most of these projects. So it's not like only the little rectangle will be disturbed. I mean, you've seen the sites, mostly, a lot of times I've seen the whole thing is regraded, and so there can be root damage. But, you know, that's something that we can actually, like, it sounds like it's going to be maybe 10 years before something would be built back there, and at that point, what you have to do is try to work out a tree protection, and make sure a certain area doesn't, wouldn't compromise your tree. And I've done that with a neighbor, so it's.
And even now, it's set up so that the trees are considered at the grading plan.
Yeah, so the arborist will address the plan for the trees at grading plan.
But it's also something that could be talked about during the Seabird point of, but I mean, none of that can be dealt with until the actual construction is closer.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing as this is now formal, is there any other speaker slips, or anyone else wish to speak on this issue? All right, I'm now closing the public hearing formally. All right. Before I request a motion, I mean, I said this at the last meeting, but for those who are here, and to Ms. Cicada, these type of proposals are certainly not my favorite. I don't know that it fits in the neighborhood wonderfully well. Pipe stems add to me a density that I wish was not being added to the community. But in terms of the powers of the Planning Commission, they are very limited when it comes to subdivisions, which I also understand, this is a landowner who has, who is meeting all the code and requirements and setbacks, and has the right to subdivide their property. And false church, unfortunately, it usually means a large lot split into two smaller ones as opposed to a more suburban type of subdivisions, where you're talking about large area where it's multiple houses and well-planned out, and the community is the subdivision. We get these once a month about, and they are my least favorite applications because of our ability to, our limited ability to shape how they interact with the community. In this particular case, I said it just a moment ago, I think this, this landowner is being very responsive to our comments, and so I appreciate it and am going to support it when a motion is made. So that's sort of the context by which we make this vote, and I appreciate your comments. I share them honestly. I, just as a commissioner, we just, in a commission, we don't have much ability to stop a landowner from subdividing their property if they meet the code and the setbacks. So with that being said, can I get a motion? Anyway.
I'll do it. I move that the Planning Commission grant preliminary final approval of the subdivision as shown in final plat, contingent upon administrative staff review of needed modifications related to the subject plat, labeling errors and missing information as indicated in the staff report.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
A discussion on this beyond what I just said? Okay, Ms. G, can you take a roll call vote on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Ladisca?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, with Mr. Krasner absent.
Mr. Ladisca, could I just take a comment? I think it's always good to note that, you know, we are sometimes changing of our community with larger homes, that most of our homes here in the city are on plots of land that are zoned, but their coverage is not as much as it's allowed, you know, as far as percentage-wise as it's allowed by code. And that always comes as a kind of a surprise to people when the bigger home does go up and around the smaller homes. And it is happening, you know, all over the city. I just wanted to note that that percentage of coverage is just, you know, that's what we said code, people can build to them.
All right, we're going to move on to the public hearing for 116 East Jefferson Street.
Okay.
And while the applicant's coming up, I'm going to look at this window and see if I can close it.
The.
It's really cool.
Yes.
But you can come on up.
The applicant, Rob Zimmerman, who you'll meet tonight, has a thumb drive with two additional examples, so he needs that thumb drive to work, so.
Yeah, I'm here.
We'll go off that. So we were not able to get a staff report written on the 4th, so we do have that now. Very similar to the one that was just approved by y'all. We have maybe one, maybe two, it depends, tiny little changes that need to be cleaned up, but in a sense, this has less ambiguity or problems related to it. So Rob represents the, I guess it's a group of investors that have bought this lot, and you manage that LLC, correct?
Yeah, correct. Hey, everybody, as I said, I'm Rob. I'm one of the property owners, I'm a majority owner, it's myself and a couple other people that I've built some development projects with in the area before. I'm the owner locally of Zimmerman Homes, construction company for custom homes. We, small company, we do about six homes a year. We've been doing that the last several years, and about a third of that business has been in the city of false church, so in the last three, four years, we've built probably seven or eight homes in the city. All right, I don't know if you want to continue?
Yeah, I think what would be appropriate is to let Rob share some of the renderings that he has, talk a little bit about what he's trying to do in subdivising this lot, and by the, well, I'll address that later. So why don't you just go ahead and just walk us through your presentation?
All right, well, sounds good. It's my first Planning Commission meeting, I didn't, I didn't realize the formality of the PowerPoints and all that, I would have put one together, so it would have been a little easier to follow through, but nonetheless, I'll click on the attachments so everybody can take a look. But this first one, main thing I want to point out, so here's the property right here, 116 East Jefferson, where the house is. On both sides of the property, like highlighted in red, blue, green here, so literally all three sides are surrounded by pipe stem lots. So I know, just following up with what I just listened to here, and everybody not being overly in favor of it, at least here, you know, we are really just trying to comply to what's already existing in the neighborhood. It's not going to stand out as something odd, because there are, you know, pipe stems surrounding it, and then if you come down the street just a little bit more, there's another one right here. So I just want, while I have the slide open, just to point out one other thing, on the corner right here, this is Jefferson Street and North Washington Street, this is the North Gate Building here. So I don't know if Lauren was going to touch upon it, but one of the staff review comments had to do with potential street widening and, you know, giving a dedication of land here opposed to just an easement for a sidewalk. That had been a discussion point that got resolved, the Public Works Department ended up saying that they had no intention of widening the road, and it really wouldn't be feasible even if they wanted to, because the North Gate Building, I measured it with a tape measure, is only 13 feet from the curb and gutter, so it's unrealistic that it would get wide in there. Anyway, just pointing that out while I have that slide open. So maybe starting here, so the subdivision itself, just looking at the lot as bird's eye view, both lots are approximately the same size, front lot would be 11,252 square foot, and the back lot, a little over 12,000. That does not include the square footage for the pipe stem. So just for a visual, so we actually already have plans developed for both properties. Here's a 3D colored view of what it would look like for the street. Both houses face forward, and they're offset, you can't tell so much from this photo, but the rear house is about 15-foot offset to the right of the front house, and you can see the styles are very different. I think they conform to the neighborhood, they're artistic, arts and crafts style, rear house kind of more of a modern farmhouse feel. We intentionally designed them different from one another, so it didn't look like, you know, you're building two of the same house, which is a pet peeve of mine, seeing people do that around town. There's another view, if you're looking straight on, you see the rear house is offset a little bit.
I might point out, go back to that picture there, you can see that the front house is really a driveway to the street, and the pipe lot is separate from, that goes around and then to their garage.
Correct, so two separate driveways, it's not a shared driveway. I think with just direction the city's going with, you know, the demand from buyers, you know, at this price point, having a shared driveway just wouldn't be very appealing. The other pipe stems in the neighborhood are mixed, some of them are shared, some of them have separate drives. The fencing here is just kind of a, you know, crude way to show some separation. I mean, we do plan to, you know, decorate that with attractive landscaping, you know, arbreidies vegetation, you know, something to break it up and add some more greenery in there. Just another view from a different angle. And then, just for another visual, here's an actual grading plan, so bird's eye view at the two houses that you just saw, their footprints oriented on the lot. Prior to coming here last week, I actually knocked on the doors and chatted with the four surrounding neighbors, I know a couple of them are here tonight. We had productive conversations, you know, ranging from questions about tree preservation as well as tree removal of certain trees, fencing and water management, all of which I think we can comfortably address during construction. And, yeah, other than that, just trying to think off the top of my head, I mean, the, what we're asking to do also is, you know, on paper, a by right thing, I mean, we meet all the zoning criteria, you know, setbacks and all that sort of stuff. And I just thought it was ironic, I mean, the opening presentation, even the last one about land preservation, greenery, I'm actually an advocate of that and support it, which I know might seem ironic with me pursuing this, but, you know, from a construction standpoint in the houses that we build, I take a lot of pride in what we actually build, and, you know, I hope that, you know, people are starting to catch on to and see what we're doing in the city. I mean, compared to, I won't speak of other builders, but what we do, I mean, we're very energy conscious with the homes that we build. You know, we have a lot of energy efficient features, green features, ranging from tankless bar heaters, you know, energy efficient HVAC systems, Nest thermostats, radiant reflective roof sheathing. We offer solar options to all of our clients, we put solar in the city last year on a new house on Roland Street. So with the new homes that we are putting in, I mean, we're very energy focused, and I know, you know, building a new home, the trade off of conserving land, that is a battle. But, you know, in the area, actually, there's definitely demand for what we're looking to do, the front house that I showed and proposed, we already have a buyer in place for it, just pending the subdivision approval, and I'm talking with a couple of ownership people on the back lot already, so. Yeah, so that's just a little background about support to me as a builder, and, you know, these are the home plans, if you want to see, I know that you guys popped them up on the other lot there, but both houses are functional, they're large, like, nice open floor plans. And actually, the like orientation of some of the windows and the size of them facing the sides, we're intentionally done to try to, you know, maximize privacy with neighbors and things like that. We're saving trees where we can. One of the unfortunate parts with this lot, the left side and the rear is really heavily overgrown with bamboo. It's a beautiful privacy shield, I actually really like it, if I was living there, I'd want to keep it, but, you know, prior to developing the plans, I met with the city arborist Kate on site, we talked through it, and, yeah, I mean, the city wants to see it all go. So one of the unfortunate things is that the mature trees that are on this lot are essentially engulfed with the bamboo, so to adequately remove the bamboo and digging the roots out, we have to take the larger trees out as well. But, you know, compared to some of the big trees in the city that, you know, that I think the city would be looking to preserve, this lot doesn't have anything over the top like that. There's nothing aged, you know, 100 years or anything like that that were taken out.
No specimen.
Yeah.
No specimen trees.
There was quite a list of trees that, you know, was given to us, some in fairly good condition too.
Well, all I can say is Kate's going to address that, and, but she and Rob have talked at length, we did a site tour, and the first concern of hers was the invasive plants and the root system, and it's growing fast. I mean, this thing is moving, and pretty soon, he won't have a yard, it's going to be.
It needs to go.
Yeah.
South Vietnam.
If you look at the bird's eye view plat here, this is the left side of the property here, and basically from this point back, it's, there's bamboo scattered and across the rear here. So just to handle the bamboo, you know, the larger stuff on the left here is going to have to come out because of that. There actually are some pretty nice holly trees that keep their leaves year round here. Kate was okay with it, I'd like to give it a shot with maintaining them. I talked to the neighbor here in this house as well, and they would like to see that as well.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, I mean, if people want to have some, a screen.
Yeah.
Holly is a much better choice for our environment, and it provides food for birds and the water. The bamboo provides nothing.
Yeah.
It's invasive and shouldn't be here.
Yeah. So we are, we are able to keep this tree in the rear, this larger one, and the other stuff here is really not that sizable. I mean, there's, there's one in the middle that would have to come down anyway just to remove the existing house. And just to note on that, the existing house, which we're planning to take down, it is older, it's not historic, but it's in pretty rough shape. I was pretty surprised when we, when we took it over. I mean, you know, if somebody wanted to attempt to develop it, it would have to be fully got structural, you know, the basement's a six and a half foot tall ceiling, you know, there's, there's mold and water damage, and it's, the house is a real mess, so I think it's better taking it out than anything.
And I'll add a comment on that. This home is not historic, so it does not go before the Historic Commission, but it did not have a subdivision name.
Yeah, that was.
So. So we had to bring that to the Historic Commission for a recommendation. And so part of the motion in terms of approving this is to approve the name that they recommended, which is Cutter Place, and that is somewhat historic. So there's some history behind the word Cutter, C U T T E R. So, you know, but you have the final say on that.
I saw Russ Zimmerman, I mean, I'm a fan of Russ. Well, thank you.
Sure.
We just heard what we had to say about these properties, so I don't need to repeat it. This one's a little different than the last one in terms of like the proportion of the houses and things like that.
I see that.
Do we have any immediate comments before I turn it over to the public?
I was just wondering the, the distance between the two houses, between the back and the front.
It's, it's 80 foot. So one note too, so when we set the houses on the lot, you know, the front setback allowed is 30 foot from the curb. We actually set this front house back 43 foot to be more in line with the two neighboring homes. It's not going to be perfectly in line, but about two foot off.
But you actually have to do that, I could, because our code calls for averaging yards.
Okay.
Which means that you have to align with the two neighbors. So you would have had to do it anyway.
Oh, good, yeah. Well, glad that, that worked out like that. But also just to point out though, with the discussion of potential street widening, if the city ever does want to look at that in the future, the house is set far enough back that even if you did want to widen the street, we would still comply to what current setbacks are after that street widening. And then, yeah, there's 40 foot to the, from the back, from the front house to the rear lot and then another 40 foot to the, to the back house. And then behind that house, it's the same thing. There's, there's 40 foot to the rear property line and then 40 foot to the house that's behind there, which is another pipe stem off of Columbia Street. So at 80 foot, I mean, that's pretty substantial. I mean, actually, there's a lot of streets in the city that are pretty narrow and, and the front of the front house on one side to the front of the front house on the other side of the street is 80 foot or less. So even though it's a front to back situation, there's still a pretty decent amount of space in between.
And with that in mind, just as a reminder, with Mr. Bellingham's property, it's far enough back that it requires that that house be sprinkled in. So that is a note. It's number eight, I think, on the plan.
On both of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's on both plans.
Yep.
I was curious just why the lot line is not straight. It has like this flare that.
Yeah, on the left side.
On the left side.
A lot of that had to do actually with the front house. I mean, we, we really wanted to build this particular house, it's got a great front elevation and we had, you know, somebody that wanted to move forward with it. In order to get the square footage, just to work out to be over the 11,250 square foot, we needed to make up for it somewhere. If we pinched the front, you know, we would have had to, it's possible to, to move the back, further back, but then we would have had to do a different house design, we lost the buyer. And, you know, frankly, I really liked this front elevation as well. I think it puts the neighborhood nicely. The owner, the soon to be owner, you know, of the front lot, I mean, is aware of it. We may just put the fence line, go like straight across there so you don't actually see it. I know the angle, you know, it's line on paper there, but once we get the buyer for the back house in place, basically the idea is that if we just take the fence line, you know, with both of their consent, we could shift it back six inches, go straight across, everybody still nets the same amount of usable space. And, and if that doesn't work out between the neighbors and we do have that, you know, that jog there, we'll just create, you know, an area of decorative landscaping to make that look intentional and functional and not just something odd. So I mean, I'm, yeah, conscious of that and aesthetically, you know, what it looks like in the end is important to me from both sides, but I think whether, whether the fence actually jogs or not, you know, we'll be able to make it look intentional and nice.
Yeah, I mean, we've done this a bunch now, so I know that's about square footage. I just was curious if aesthetically the, the plan was to have it do that sort of swoop. From a business standpoint, I'm happy that you found a buyer so quickly. In terms of the elevation, I, it's unfortunate, things are already sort of somewhat in motion and my ability to stop them are limited. Because I would have liked to, and I don't pretend to understand the market here like you do, but I would have hoped that the driveway could have been shared, come up this one side and then just cut into the garage at the, like a right angle, just for more, more pervious surface and not because of one design better than the other. I just, just would have had more grass as opposed to asphalt, so.
Sure. Well, one thing I'm hoping to actually do with the, the rear house is just do concrete strips going all the way back. The city, like during the review process with staff, I mean, they're counting, like if you have that as a driveway surface, they're counting it as impervious area, whether or not there's grass there. I just finished a house in Arlington that had a rear detached garage and we did strips all the way to the back. The visual here is really just, you know, you know, just to provide something here, but I, I'd take your point with it and, I mean, like I said, I mean, I'm, I'm not just saying it. I mean, I really do try to promote energy efficiencies and things that are good for nature. So I mean, if I could do that and bring some more greenery there, I certainly will.
Well, do you, you know, you talk about things that are good for nature and grass really isn't that great for nature. So actually, I mean, how much, well, you know, it's, we hear that a lot that we do a greenhouse, but they don't really deal with the yard as well. And so trees take up much more water. Grass tends to, sod tends to harden and water tends to run off those yards. Beds are better. So I mean, how much do you really look at and what plants do you put in? I mean, they're, they're, you know, a lot of this landscape and people say it's a greenhouse, but their landscape is totally not green.
Sure.
Environmentally friendly. It doesn't provide any kind of food or anything for butterflies or birds or anything like that either. There are good, like, that's why I'm a real proponent of holly, because at least people are willing to put those in for screening because they do provide winter food source.
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's, it's a great question. I mean, I think there are kind of two parts to that answer. I feel like the first has to do with water management, you know. I mean, obviously, when you do this on, anytime you have a pipe stem or subdivision or a big development, I mean, we're adding a lot of impervious area that's not currently there. The house that's actually to the back left, currently, I was just over there last week, like they're actually currently dealing with a good bit of water issues, like in their basement and water currently running across the back of this property towards their house. I actually think that.
Stream valley.
Yeah, they're, yeah, one, right on the other side of their property is where that stream is, but actually adding this house in the back is, is actually going to help them out. We're going to block some of that, you know, downward water that's coming from many houses, you know, in their direction. And the nice thing with doing two new houses, instead of just one, we're talking about the regrading, I mean, we have an opportunity to regrade, you know, what's necessary across the whole property. So in between the two homes, we can basically funnel the majority of, of the water on the property, both what's naturally running off and also, you know, what's coming off of the gutter lines of the house. So if we, basically the idea, if we funnel it, you know, to the low point, which is in between the two properties, what I, what I think would be the best thing after just observing it last week, we could put it all, allow the water into like a storage dry well, basically, in between the houses on the left side. And then we could pipe that across the neighbor's house on the left, which they were very open to, and basically allow the water to go directly into that, into that stream. So there's at least like.
Are you going to filter though? Because that's, it's not always great to directly have the water go in.
Well, that's the function of the dry well.
Typically, water filters through the ground and gets cleaned before it goes to the stream. You know, I just, you can do that, but, but we actually don't want water directly piped into our streams wherever we can have that not happen.
Okay.
It's really not a good environmental thing to do. It, it's much better if you put in a series of rain gardens and things to capture the water and how to allow it to naturally filter to the street.
Sure.
So I mean, this is stuff you can talk to up with the sea.
With Kate, yeah.
With Seabird as well.
Okay.
But, I mean, I'm just, and that's what I'm saying, like you probably, I think you understand energy efficiency, but what happens a lot with these, with people who say they build green is they don't understand the landscape inside of it as much. And I understand it's, you can capture water and that's great, but the way the water actually filters is actually really important to how the environment functions.
I appreciate that feedback and, I mean, I'm open to learning more about it and doing what I can to help out. I will say that, I mean, I, I've already submitted the grading plans for this and they've been fully reviewed and all comments are back. And I will say that there's not a single comment from City Falls Church, from anybody that reviews the grading plan that had anything to say about anything regarding where the water goes once it's off our property. A lot of times during the review, it's just focused on what is happening on our current property. This property does not trigger us to do anything regarding a rain garden, fire retention system, dry well, anything like that, because our impervious area, even with doing the two driveways, doesn't meet the, the maximum allowed. But with that said, you know, I mean, I care about the impact of at least the neighbors and the function. My head, I guess, is trained more so water runoff and.
As you might know, that we have a stormwater tax. So they look at your yard and they look at your impervious surface and then your tax is based on it.
Okay.
So your future owners might want you to put in these rain gardens and things that can help you there.
Sure.
A fee, I'm sorry, it's a fee.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, it's a stormwater fee.
That's it, I'm, I'm open to doing what I can to mitigate that.
City does have a grant program now for, for rain gardens, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true too. But I'm just saying that there is, there is a fee for, for stormwater runoff and, and they look at what your, what your yard does with the water. And, and I'm just saying, like, if you just have grass, that doesn't, you don't get any points for that.
Right. Is that the, is that the nutrient credit or is that something different?
No, it's, it's, it's really just based on what your impervious surface is. And so if you have a lot of impervious surface, but you can show that you have rain gardens and things like that, you can get a credit and so you don't have as large a fee.
Okay.
But like I have, I have a lot of that, so I'm able to get most, I don't, my fee's very small, depending on how much stuff I have. The rain barrels, cisterns, cisterns will also give you credits to take that fee down. Because they're asking, you know, so the more you do, the, the smaller your fee is because you're keeping more water on your property. But it sounds like if it's water, if they're getting that much water between the two houses, you're going to want to do something with it anyway, just for future use of the property.
Yeah.
It's, it's not going to get better.
Obviously, we had a good rain last week, so you could see.
Right.
But I understand, the thing is, the staff, the staff tend, the staff may, I may comment, because you don't, like you said, you don't have to do this and they tend to focus on what you have to do. I'm just saying, like, if you wanted to be truly environmentally friendly, you would be looking at your landscape and trying to do more out there as well.
Yeah. Oh, it sounds good. I mean, and that, yeah, that low side, I mean, I'll look into doing a rain garden or planting vegetation that soaks out, you know, water to help out there. Sure.
I mean, that's.
I'm going to plant something anyway, so I might as well plant something that's going to have those benefits too.
Well, it would be a great thing, because otherwise what you really should say is that my house is very energy efficient and I'm good with that, but it's not really green if you're not doing that outside.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Just briefly, I do appreciate the focus on energy efficiency. Are you thinking of getting certification under any particular program, Energy Star?
I have, and I mean, as, as a small business, it's honestly quite challenging to do it. I mean, I've looked into it in the City of Falls Church and, you know, if I remember, because I haven't looked at it in a little while, but you basically have to follow, you know, Energy Star guidelines, get that certification, then also do, you know, the city paperwork. And, you know, it's basically myself, I'm a project manager, so keeping up with the backend of my business is, is difficult as it is, but I mean, I, I'm gonna, I'm keep, I'm continuing to shift there with our company. I'd ideally love to build every house with a certification and, you know, put solar in every home. I mean, we're, we're inching in that direction. But just from a paperwork and backend standpoint, it's a little challenging. But I've had a couple people that, you know, own property and hire us to build and that's the main part of our business. And we've gotten, you know, energy certifications for them, do hers ratings, blow her door tests. I've gotten certification with the NAHB for, you know, how they, how they do their point system. And our, our homes perform pretty well for what we do as a standard. I, I do think that if I were to fill out the paperwork and have somebody from the city observe it, I would be surprised if our, you know, what we consider our base model house, if we're not already qualifying for, you know, one of the criteria for, I know they have different levels of it.
Yeah, the, the city's building inspector Doug Fraser has the Green Homes program for the city and it's, it's pretty flexible. It's, I mean, any certified program would qualify you. And when you get it, you get another opportunity to go for a city meeting. This would be the city council, but this would be for a positive reason, you'd get recognition for it. So I encourage you to at least think about it and look at it.
Okay.
But a good hers score is a good thing.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open this up to public comment. Ms. G, do you have any formal speaker slips?
I have none at this time.
All right. To those in attendance, do you wish to speak on this matter? If you could just state your name and address and.
My name's Amy Carr. I am 202. Sorry, you need to be a closer.
I'm sorry.
My name's Amy Carr. I am 202 East Jefferson. So I am the low house, relatively new homeowner, new to Falls Church. And so we are the house that, if you looked at that map to the left, to the, to the back left and, and, you know, I didn't really, when we bought the house, I didn't realize the restrictions, et cetera, that that could possibly be subdivided. So right now, we look out on a beautiful empty lot, you know, we have a third story, we look out on a humongous tree that towers above and has the fireflies in the fall. So this is, although Rob has gone, you know, out of his way to talk to all of us and to address our concerns and I really appreciate the, the willingness to work with us. It has a huge impact. In particular, it's the loss of the trees and those trees are tied directly into the water. So the waters, there's a 10 foot drop between the neighbors on one side and our yard and we're already with lots of water absorbing bamboo and big trees getting a whole lot of water into that, that hits the back of our house and just seeps in. And so I'm concerned and he's tried to address that, but it, to some degree, also goes into my second point is, as a newcomer as well, I'm not quite sure who, who I talked to in the city. So if the city has reviewed this and, you know, not made any comments about water and says everything's fine, well, you know, it might have been nice if, if we had had a chance to talk before then or during then and maybe you can tell me.
That would be the Department of Public Works and its share between arborist and the stormwater management person, Jason Woodson. So I can help get you those contacts.
I mean, you know, fortunately he came over last week and so a lot of the concerns that I might have addressed, at, at, at least, you know, we've at least discussed them, which is part of why I wanted to come tonight, to just make sure those were raised somewhere. But I had made a comment, an email just about that, that I'm not sure got into your packet. You know, I'm here, so that's fine. I also was told there would be a letter circulated to all the homeowners. I've been there more than six months. So just in terms of communicating with taxpayers, I think that's important. I did not.
Well, we're required by statute to use the assessor's address file. We can't just make up our own. We have to legally correct.
Not pay, you know, more taxes than I'm getting back on my federal income tax. So I mean, I've obviously been here.
Yeah.
Just, just, you know, just procedurally.
They may be behind in updating their address file that Mrs. G uses. So.
To be clear, because we did send out a mailing to the addresses we have in whatever.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We spent, what, about a month?
But I got an email saying I would, you know, reminding them that I was new, that I would get one. It's just procedurally.
No, something broke down, but I just want to make sure it's clear, like notices went out. If you didn't get one, that's a problem, but it wasn't that notices weren't sent out to the.
Yeah, we are intentless to definitely do it. Slipped through the cracks as we're moving, packed and moving.
So, I mean, you know, you, it's a density issue and I, and I realized that, you know, he's gone out of his way and it's going to meet the codes and it's, you know, in some ways enhances our property, but in other ways, you know, it's, our property is, our house is very close to the property line there. Maybe eight feet, maybe, maybe 15, 15 feet. So it's, it's, it's close, you know. Bamboo has a lot of problems, but right now it's a, you know, it's a really nice barrier.
Sure. Thank you. I wish we could do more for you here and your concerns. I do think it's going to have an impact on your life, but in terms of the code and the requirement and the Virginia law, sounds, from the proposal and of what I've read from our packet, this meets the requirements that you're required to do, and it sounds like you've been at least sensitive to neighbors, which I appreciate. All right, there's no other comments, I'm going to close it to the public. And no more? Okay, all right. If there's any other, if there's not any other discussion, I'm ready to entertain a motion on this subdivision.
Okay, Chair, I move that the planning commission ranked preliminary and final plat approval of subdivision of 116 East Jefferson Street, RPC number 53-102-014, into proposed lots 105A and 105B contingent upon administrative staff review of missing items listed in the staff report.
I'll second it.
All right.
Clarify, man, the cut or place thing, that's cool to everybody.
Oh, I think it's very, not only cool, it's respectful for the history, and I appreciate that.
People living in that neighborhood.
Yeah. Do we have any discussion about these motions, or we good?
Again, it's pretty clear that, you know, this is not planning commission saying this is the design we want, or this is how many houses we'd like to see here, this is us going, looking at the law and saying, what can we do and what can't we do?
Yeah. Okay. Ms. G, can you call the rule?
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with Mr. Krasner absent.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. I'm going to be in the city for a long time. You'll see me again for something. I'm going to make up for this with some greenery somewhere. I'm going to do something.
I do want to be like, are all solar?
You're not making up for anything. This is your land, you have the rights of divided, and you follow all the laws.
I understand everybody's concerns.
You follow all the laws, that's all. That's all we can ask, but you not have to make up for it. Make money, make a living, that's not apologetic.
Okay.
It's getting weird.
The, we've guilted everybody on this issue.
But it's still not one of our favorite things to do.
He can't tempt anybody with that.
All right, next I have is discussion of retreat date.
Retreat where?
Can I make one point before we switch gears? You'll notice that we have a new format for the reporting of staff reports, and so our new planning director, Paul Stoddard.
Congratulations.
Yep, has developed a template for us to use as staff, and it follows a more logical, you know...
Which one is it? With the blocks on top or this?
The box, the one with the box.
Okay, because we're used to a box, and I like the box.
I like the box, too, because it has names of the...
To have, it's somewhat similar to what happens with the...
It was just interesting, we have two different formats, I'm like, which one is it?
Right, and I couldn't find information on the other one that I could find on this, so...
Yeah.
So thanks to Paul, that is our new template, and we're going to be working that.
The block one works really well.
Well, before we move to the next item, I would like to congratulate you all.
Thank you, Chair.
Formally, well deserved, and I look forward to working with you on a one-on-one basis as the chair, but also to be a part of our meetings as a group.
Thank you very much. When I joined the city about five years ago, one of my first responsibilities was being the staff liaison to the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation, and I like to think that I provided a great service to that group, but personally, it was very rewarding for me. One of the reasons I got into urban planning was so that I could serve the community, and to this opportunity to work directly with a commission, in this case, the planning commission, which, as we're seeing tonight, has a lot of impact on the way the city looks and develops. So I'm very much personally invested in working with this group, and I hope that I can provide that same level of service to you all that I did to the TACT.
Well, you have presented before us for the last five years and shown yourself to be quite knowledgeable and thorough, and I expect nothing less in your role as leader.
Nice.
Expect more now.
Expect more.
Balance accepted.
So congratulations.
And he's a new father.
Yeah, yeah.
But unfortunately, we look at this type of thing, it does not...
Well, it's hard.
Well, we're talking about retreat dates, and development in single-family neighborhoods is something that could be a topic of discussion.
We've talked about it a great deal.
In the hype.
I'm not sure we have much recourse here, nor, I mean, I have mixed feelings about it. I don't like it in terms of the city of Falls Church, but this is, these are...
Somebody's money.
Somebody's money, and they own this land, and they are entitled to do what they want to do under the code, so they're following, as we just said, they're following the laws. I don't begrudge them, it's just, as a resident of Falls Church, I don't like this type of density, but I got no issue with these applications.
You could buy all these lots and keep them.
That's right. I can't, really, but theoretically, that's great. All right, discussing of the retreat date, Paul, we talked, not about the date, but about the retreat meeting or two ago, I'm not sure if you were in attendance on that one. We're going to try to recreate what we did last year, which is just reserve a Monday, come in later, or, I think lunch, lunch/dinner was provided, which was really wonderful.
Yeah, it was filet mignon.
Surf and turf.
Not, it wasn't Panera sandwiches.
So in terms of dates, I have, actually, this is probably easier to do on the computer than the code. We're looking at Mondays here, just to make...
The, in your agenda, there are the upcoming meeting dates for the planning commission. Looking ahead to March, there's March 5th and 19th, and then in April, there's April 2nd and 16th.
Last year, we did it in March, if I recall. Sorry, it's taking me a second to open this up.
If you move it to the March 19 meeting, if that works for the group, that might make it a little bit easier on planning staff. On February 26, there is action on the campus RFQ in front of council. Planning staff will obviously have a foot in both camps there, so if we could move, in terms of serving both the planning commission and council. So if we could schedule for a March 19 date, it might make it a little bit easier in terms of preparing for the retreat.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly okay with me, I mean, these Mondays are reserved anyway, so...
If it's the 26th, wouldn't it be easier for you if we did March 5th? So we're further away from the 26th?
No, you're saying it's February 26th.
Oh, it's February 26th, I'm sorry, I thought it's in March 26th. The problem with March and February is the dates are exactly the same.
That's another thing we can talk about at the retreat.
Okay, so the 19th.
In February?
Anyway, the 19th is fine for me.
So March 19, to be clear.
Okay.
So start time of...
Do you want to meet at... We can have dinner for the commission that night, 6:30.
6:30 is fine. We haven't developed the agenda, but last year, I thought it was 6:00 to be...
I was going to say, I think we need, I think 6:00 would work better.
Sure.
Staff is here.
And I assume it's here, are we, is this the new location for meetings for the foreseeable future?
Although, we should confirm we get it is really 6:00.
Yeah, I'll coordinate with our counterparts that a 6:00 PM start on March 19 could be available.
Just meet down there.
We'll follow up with you before the next meeting.
Why don't we just have dinner downstairs?
Oh, yeah. I was thinking flipping pizza, I'm like, do we, oh, we could have pizza, I like pizza.
If there's a conflict at 6 o'clock, just...
I bet flipping pizza would deliver.
Well, they do deliver, and it would actually be warm.
Yeah.
Like the room.
It got a little bit better, the draft stopped.
Yeah.
I think, I think Sevy, like, turned the heat on for us. You turn the heat up, because I saw you everything. Is that what it was? It was like, it felt like the window was open.
All right, so that's the date.
We complain about things like that.
We have the CIP to do tonight, so I don't really want to discuss what we're going to talk about at the retreat. I would like to move that to, like, the next meeting, because we had a speaker series this evening, and I want to move to what else is, what else we have to deal with this evening. But so, I think in our next meeting, if we just spend a few minutes, because it also gives us a couple, I guess, not our next meeting, because I think we're going to meet in a week, but in two weeks, to just think about things you want to talk about at the retreat, and I'll come with some topics as well, and we can discuss, just to set the agenda, so that when we come here, we're all up to date.
Yeah, I think I sent you a whole long list for the council, I'll just repeat it for us.
Great. Because that's item D, discussion of city council work plan, perfect segue. Melissa, are you, staff walking us through what you want us to do? I think I know what you want us to do, but...
Yes, in your packets, it went out today, but in your electronic packets, there was a brief memo and then a reminder of what came out from the clerk's office several weeks ago, and that is a request, the city council is holding their biennial retreat, once every two years, this Saturday, and as part of that retreat, they're seeking, soliciting advice and input from their boards and commissions. And so they have provided a form, which is attached, and they're seeking input from boards and commissions on top five priorities, and one of the things they're really trying to do with these recommendations is connect back the work of this year, this two-year work plan to what was in the adopted vision chapter, which was adopted just this April past. I think this is an excellent way for the planning commission to put some oomph behind the city's comprehensive plan, which, as you all know, is one of the primary documents that the city uses for guiding development, but it's also one of the documents that the planning commission has primary authorship over. So I think this is a great time for the planning commission to assert itself and its responsibilities for long-range planning, and to make the case for how long-range planning and short-term actions can come together. So the specific request from council is for the top, at least, five priorities, and also there's an opportunity for boards and commissions to present those ideas at the retreat this Saturday. So I think also as part of defining goals or coming up with a way to communicate those to council, also making sure that there's someone from the planning commission available to participate in the retreat this Saturday.
Is that open for the rest of us to attend, or...
Yes, it is.
Absolutely.
The invitation is for all boards and commission members to attend. I think, since I am facilitating the retreat, I have advanced information about what the agenda looks like, there is going to be an opportunity for boards and agendas to present. It's going to be about an hour and a half, so I think that those boards and commissions that have a relatively clean presentation and one or most two speakers able to make a clear, concise pitch, I think are going to be well positioned.
All right, so in order, we need to come up with topics that we think are important, five of them.
It could be a combination of things. It could be things that you think are of interest, it could be residential development, it could be development up at the school site, it could be continuing progress on small area plans, or it could be specific items. For example, you want to get the greenway downs overlay adopted within the next two years, or you want to see movement on paper streets with action in the long-range plan. So it could either be general interests or specific things to achieve.
I can give you the list I sent Paul, I don't know if you're interested in this very long list I sent.
Can I, can I just show it there, like, next, in two years, when we do this again, I found it would have been helpful to have seen what their current goals and projects were, just to give me some ideas for, like, the kinds of things that they have on this list, but...
Well, and these would be our goals, too.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, just as, like, inspirational, like, okay, what are we, are we talking, like, hey, I want to stop signing this one corner, and it's probably small, but, you know, or are we talking, like, oh, I want to have moving sidewalks throughout the city, like, you know, it's hard, it's realistic. This is just a blank sheet, so I was kind of like, well, I don't know what exactly they're...
Some of the larger planner, planning item, planning-related items that have made it on our, the updates to the parking ordinance, getting the revitalization districts formally recognized, completing the West Broad Plan, cottage housing.
I'm just saying, like, presumably, they had a list from last time, people just see that list as a reference.
Yes, preparing that, yes, sharing that.
Well, I just, I'll share what I sent to Paul. It's the number one priority for us, is getting all the area plans completed, and then because of the age, we're going to need to circle back and review our older ones.
Yep.
And then I said, getting the greenway downs done and overlay approved, because we did all the work and we really should do it.
Do it.
I also think that we need, as a city, to review all our parking regulations, the spaces, the tow-in, the development, because I don't think that our parking regulations are in synergy with each other, especially the way tow-in is used and things like that. I thought that we also need a comprehensive study of traffic in the city, because we've been doing it piecemeal with these developments, but we really haven't looked at, and we did it some when we looked at that part of the comprehensive plan, but I think that there could be a deeper study of the way traffic is flowing, and also, not just exactly in the city, but to expand that out and look, how is Tyson's traffic, how is Maryfield, how is Seven Corners, how is Arlington affecting us? Because I don't think we really looked at it in one big picture to really think about it, and also because we, we're constantly hearing from people when we have development that they're concerned about the traffic in the city, about a specific project, but we know that the majority of the traffic in the city is not coming from the city, and I think that we really need to have a study that really spells out where this traffic's coming from. The other thing is, there's a couple of code changes we discussed doing a while back that we've never really gone back to. One is, well, one is not allowing commercial lots to have one-story buildings, we talked about doing that. It would not, that would mean that our commercial lots could not become a pad site, so we wouldn't get another CVS or, well, Rite Aid is really the good example. We have a big piece of property now that's a single-story Rite Aid and a lot of parking. So we had talked about doing that, I think it's something to think about. We talked about changing all the paper streets to park designations as greenways, that's something that we really should just go for it and do, but we need that. Some, a part of the problem is, a lot of these things need to go through a council work session, and if we could get them as a goal of the council, then perhaps we could actually get on the calendar and get them done. And then this is another one we talked about at the time, and I'm not sure if this is still something that people believe in, but at the time, we talked about revising or removing T1 altogether.
Right, right.
Because T1 doesn't really help us.
And it gets us into trouble a lot of times.
You know, a lot of the T1 was done because people were scared that they were too close to a commercial corridor and they wanted that buffer, but the fact is, we don't really, we can't really allow that buffer to be there the way they want it to be, which is, they want it to be like a one-story development or something like that. And so I, and I think that we've gotten in trouble with T1 where we left it in place. Across from the library is a good example. We had a nice piece of property there adjacent to commercial, across from the library, that should be commercial and instead it's two homes.
Right, right.
So, and it doesn't really help the flow of that neighborhood. In fact, we lost street parking that was useful to the library. So, anyway, so that's what I threw out, but I, to me, like, the big pieces is, I really do think that getting the paper streets done, getting greenway downs done, those are easy ones, I think, I really do think we should look at all the parking regulations as one big group, because we've looked at the tow-in at one point, we've looked at art, but I don't think we've really looked at how it all affects each other.
Yeah, I had been thinking about this, also in parking, I know people thought about this, but I think it'd be worth looking into the idea of creating a parking authority and some sort of paid public parking, ideally using technology that could maybe even, maybe even be able to incorporate private lots in some way as a way to incur, you know, we have some places have too much parking, other places don't have enough, nobody wants to share, but could we create an incentive, either financially or even just facilitating sharing by the city or the EDA or somebody, service, some sort of go-between to defray insurance costs or liability or legal...
Could build on, Letty Hurdy at the last EDC meeting was involved with some kind of a task group, and they came up with, like, pages of ideas.
Yeah.
I don't know what they planned to do with it, but it seemed like that sort of...
Because Jim always talks about, you take, you look at a satellite picture of downtown, there's plenty of parking, it's just not, you know, used by the right people the right time and all that stuff.
Has anyone used Panda Parking? So if you go to the zoo, there's...
A banned band bay.
Yeah, well, if you go to the zoo, there's this app called Panda Parking, and if you can't park at the zoo, which even if you have a membership and it's free parking, sometimes and it's free parking, sometimes you can't park there. And you go on the app and it tells you parking spaces that are available for short-term, like how many hours you can have it. So I've done it and I've ended up parked at a hotel there. And they just had extra spots and they just, so basically, I'm sure other apps, but they call it Panda Parking at the zoo. So what these apps do, they work with localities to say like how many spots they have available for parking on this app. And then you pay for it and then they get a percentage of it. So there is like, that would be kind of, I think, what you're, like, it would allow shared parking through a, through an app. And have you guys done the app parking like at a beach? Like if you go to Cape May, all their parking, it's just, it's an app. You, they use a satellite to show where you are. And then you automatically get your parking without a piece of paper or any machine.
It's not like that, especially, I don't even know if any of these programs would allow someone to say, hey, I have a private lot with five spaces. I'm happy to make a few bucks. I'll designate them and put the numbers on, however that works, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, but that's, that's how the Panda Parking works. It just says your parking space is here, this number at this place.
And the other thing is, you know, if it's just on, you know, just on-street parking, create turnover or something like that.
There is a proposal going to the EDA tomorrow night that is trying to blend together or fuse together two planning concepts that have both come through this commission. One is the downtown small area plan, the other is the Park Avenue Great Streets. And building off of both of those, one which is an adopted plan, which is, one is, which is a grant-funded project, that idea of doing something now, and the proposal that's going for the EDA tonight is to expand on-street parking throughout the downtown area by opening up on-street spaces that are currently signed as no parking. And also to install additional pedestrian crosswalks throughout the area, especially mid-block crosswalks. That, one of the things that comes up with parking is that there can only be so many spaces directly in front of the front door. For any business, it's probably about one or two spaces directly in front of the front door. The rest of them, you have to walk. And so that's why pedestrians and autos are things that go hand-in-hand when you're talking about parking, that it's great to build parking, but you have to build a way for people to get from the parking to the places they want to go. And that's why these two concepts are blending together. As you may remember, downtown small area plan really focused on that idea of the core entertainment area revitalizing those three blocks of the city's historic downtown area. And finding a way to support infill in something like a parking district that allows people to buy into parking spaces or buy out of parking requirements might allow for the kinds of infill in smaller development projects that otherwise may not be possible.
You know, something I've thought of and have mentioned to a few people, we've got, as Andy said, there's all kinds of lots, parking for different buildings and everything like that. And to maybe look at doing some negotiating on stormwater fees for use of their lots, you know, to maybe decrease a little bit, you know, just for instance, I know that the city right now is having trouble with any parking over the 400 building that you are going into. And as a matter of fact, they're encouraging parking out of Lawton Street.
No, they should.
Yeah, I know, but, but still, you know, considering what we're trying to do on the other side of things is to get that development through. But I'm just saying, it's.
There's a lot of driveways there.
Yeah, but the churches, you know, over there and just, but maybe there might be some, a little bit give for access to parking.
But the other side of it, too, is I think we'd be better off going with like an app where they get paid a little bit for parking. I think.
This is good for our retreat.
Yeah, sorry.
I just want to get five topics.
Yeah, you're right.
You want five and ranking them from us. Okay. Tim, do you have any you want to add?
Yeah, I had a couple that I sent around a few weeks ago. I probably got lost and all emailed it. One is the obvious one, help design and implement supporting legislation and code changes for developer entitlements associated with the West End project. I'm going to assume the city council is going to be mostly focused on that, that issue.
I want that.
Second one is just an issue of my interest is improving the environmental quality of new buildings.
You?
Him?
Environment?
But, and it's tied into rewriting the environmental chapter of the comprehensive plan, which I think was, 2005 was the last time that came up. And then just emphasize actions with respect to individual applications, like we did with the insight, where we were successful, I think, in at least getting the developer to target or lead gold. Anyway, have some goals and criteria for the city to use when it negotiates voluntary concessions.
The concession situation has always been a question as to what goes in, who gets percent of what. And, you know, it's always a huge thing, because you're dealing with boards and commissions from all sides on that.
Well, that's quite a list from all of you. So, do we have five that we can, so we're certainly not dealing with anything specific, like stop sign at the end, as of the street. These are big topics.
I think the paper street one and the overlay, whatever.
Greenway Downs?
We should put them on there, because like, why don't we just finish those and be done?
I agree.
Otherwise, we're going to have to go back through a lot of it anyway.
Eight or nine at least. And so, I mean, maybe that's, like, the agenda item is to, instead of mentioning greenway downs and paper streets, just sort of summarize that in a summary bullet that says.
Action on prior plans.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
You've got our input. Maybe it's the chair's discretion to pick the biggest two.
No, I'm trying to get more on this list, since we had a lot we wanted to address. So, you know, the forms.
And those two together.
Yeah, that's right, exactly.
Turkey.
And we could say exist in.
Their top six.
Development.
We need to get them on agendas for the city council.
Yeah, these are, these are existing projects that are ready for action.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for years.
Yeah.
I think they're.
And I mean, those are pretty easy ones, the greenway downs and the paper streets.
EG.
Conversion of paper streets to greenways, to green spaces. So I think those are easy, too.
And we haven't been able to get them on the agenda.
Right, no, this is just a sore point.
So that could be one. I don't know if we need to talk about, like, put in that we want the area plans completed. I would assume that the council agrees with that, but does,
Yeah, that's not, that's me.
That's kind of a no-brainer.
That's for us, where, you know.
And I'm not sure if we need to put stuff in there about, you know, some of the development that's going on, like with the high school and stuff, because isn't that going to be there anyway?
It will be. I mean, they have to be talking about that.
Right.
I think it's, I think it's relevant, but I think that's on their agenda already.
Absolutely. And so many of these things that you were mentioning, Melissa, and I'm thinking, you know, I kept thinking, haven't we done that? And, you know, we haven't.
We haven't done a comprehensive study of traffic.
No, no, that's a biggie. No, no, I'm not even saying that. But some of the other things is just like.
Like the pad site stuff. But that, we just talked about doing that at some point. We never really researched it or put it out there. But, but I do think, because our feeling was that we don't have enough commercial property and that to have a commercial property become a pad site would be a bad deal for us.
And I thought that we had passed the, to not have a single-story building.
I think we talked about it, but I don't think it went forward. I swear.
In regards to what's going to be on sort of the planning commission's recommendations versus what the council may or may not take on, certainly the West Falls Street project, I don't know that it's bad to show alignment between what you all are going to be working on and what the council's going to be working on.
Yeah, this, yeah, this is where the whole, the request is a little bit confusing to me, because.
They're not telling us.
City council's going to have one of the five goals for two years, but who knows?
Sorry to interrupt. Historically, the city's completed about 20 items out of their work plan every two years. So when you think about the number of boards and commissions, there are obviously more recommendations coming up than are going to get selected.
And so then the question is, should our strategy be like, I mean, I agree with alignment, but like, why waste one of our five things on something we know is going to be a huge priority for them at the risk of not getting something else?
I think the environmental issues are really important, but I assume the environmental sustainability council is going to.
We've got the heft, we can push it over the line. And that's where, I guess, I'm wondering is if we show alignment with the environmental sustainability.
Sustainability.
Commission, commission, committee, mission. That could maybe really help that issue bubble the top. If we say, hey, we should really focus on the West Falls Street development, I mean, they don't focus on that when they do the city councils. They need our encouragement to focus on that.
And that goes back to like, I'm talking about traffic and parking, but I don't know if CACT talks about that, you know?
Yeah, right, yeah. I think parking is an important one. I mean, especially what you guys were talking about in terms of adding paid parking to the city, that was a proposal as part of the broad, and Washington proposal was the first time I've seen that in the city at all. So if that's the direction we're heading, reviewing and assessing, you know, parking, planning, and Melissa's word synergies, I think that should be an important one. There's a lot happening in that. Parking requirements, we've talked about in great length, this should come down, but maybe there's a better solution to using technology. I think that's a pretty important one.
And now that you have these apps that you don't have to have any infrastructure to have paid parking, I mean, you don't have to have anything.
Probably a big license fee, but.
You have to have the app.
Well, that's the question.
And how will old people park?
What?
How will old people park?
Shh. I just said, but you have to have the app.
Right.
Right. You got the app.
No, I wouldn't even know where to get it. So no, no, I'm sure somebody could put it on my phone.
If you go to Cape May and want to park near the beach, you're going to get the app.
I mean, I would love to do all this if I knew where to start. Don't do the old folks.
I know, like Durham, North Carolina, where I have an office, they just rolled out some new parking thing. People figured it out. But I'm just saying, it's not.
Yeah. Well, I think you have to have a mix of parking. You have to have the traditional lots that people understand and the garages that most people can tolerate.
We just did this. We just went into this. We cannot stay with.
Okay, sorry.
It's a topic, that's all.
You're right, you're sorry.
So far, I've got.
On our retreat, we want to talk about parking.
We've had all those reports from Susan Bell for pretty sake.
I know. Well, we haven't done anything. We haven't done anything with them.
Mr. Chair, points that I've heard raised and echoed include.
I appreciate this summary.
Paper streets, greenway downs overlay district.
Yes, check, check.
Parking, and then.
What about the app part?
And then the natural resources chapter, and especially as it relates to environmental quality of new development.
Okay.
Those are the four items that I've heard raised and echoed.
And the discussion about T1, I think, is a legitimate discussion, but.
I do, too.
That seems like something.
Eventually, we'll run out of it.
We have to lead on that. I can see how they're going to do that until we, when we do something.
It's the weakest of this. The other things were much more lofty in terms of their.
Well, and T1, the T1 thing has to be done strategically based on when elections are, because it's going to be something that brings up a lot of.
So if we wanted to reinforce the importance to deal with what's going on at the new high school site, I mean, what?
One item you could push is talking about small area planning, using that as an opportunity to complete the small area planning for the west end of town, for the remaining planning opportunity areas there, everything west of the W N O D.
Yeah, the Gordon Triangle and.
That this would be an opportunity to assert that the planning commission's taking a long view here and we're connecting, understanding how properties relate, that the property that's proposed is 10 acres of development. You've got approximately another 10 acres of development on the Womata ownership. And then otherwise in city boundaries, the Gordon Road and the federal realty property, all told, you're looking at about 60 acres, somewhere between 60 and 70 acres for that entire area. So that's something that calls for a longer range view.
I agree with that, Paul. I get so frustrated, even with the property coming up of the high school, that we don't have a small area plan.
Yeah, we're always.
And, and we're the horses of the barn so often before we have a plan. And that just, you know, it's happened in a couple of places.
Yep.
And that is just not good planning.
I could sign on to that. Everybody okay with that? Now, do we have to rank these in one, two, three, four, five?
I don't think, I don't think they.
Do we have to give them rank?
Did we get to five already?
We got to five, we just made it.
There is no, there's no slot for ranking, obviously, the order in which they get written down. Some people might perceive that.
Yeah.
If you like, I can put them in alphabetical and put a note that says these are listed in alphabetical order.
Good luck.
Then you have to choose your words to put the alphabet.
Well, is anyone going to be able to go to the tree?
Oh, yeah.
I have to go. Lyndy and I always go.
I mean, I'm sorry, I don't let anything like that go past me.
You guys could make it clear that we didn't rank these.
Yes, we can do that.
Absolutely.
If they wanted them ranked, they should have asked us to.
I think this is wonderful direction. I appreciate the frank conversation and the speed with which the group actually came to a recommendation on five items.
You know, I just.
I was going to say, I don't, I know it's a confusing time, but a little more lead time on this kind of a topic would be helpful.
Well, we had a lot.
No, we did. We got an email.
But I'm saying like, to talk about.
I sent it to Paul two weeks ago.
Talk, they're talking about.
You know, but I think that one of the things I have heard Letty Hardy say that wants some sort of coordination or parallel planning with all boards and commissions, which is something I've often spoken of, you know, and just the big thing is, is that now, even in the EDA, they'll come up with stuff that maybe had, we'd talked about a long time ago and couldn't be done, or something was difficult with it. But there's no coordination with the effort that's being put forth with the boards and commissions.
Well, we talked about this last year. We had it just a very little bit, but we had said that our, one of my goals was to invite those.
Right. They don't come.
I didn't invite them formally. And they've been invited in the meeting. I didn't write, I didn't write letters and things like that. I just announced it during this meeting and didn't follow.
I know.
I'm hopeful that the retreat is going to be an opportunity for boards and commissions to identify common interests. And I think that might lead to a round of invitations. I know several boards and commissions have been making those, those connections. CACT has met with the planning commission as well as the EDA. Tree Commission and the ESC are meeting regularly. I think the more that happens, the better it is.
It's important.
Instead of two people moving forward, issues that are very close but slightly different, you can get some real energy if you have two groups having the same conversations.
And for, big one on the list for our retreat, if I could just throw this in, could we have an update on the comprehensive plan as to where we've been, where, what we've done, what has, what chapters, where are we? I mean, I've been dealing with the comprehensive plan since 2005.
It's probably time to start all over.
I know. And it just seems like it goes round and round and round and round. And, you know, the status of, of different parts of it. Where are we with it? And what's the?
Our vision statement is in good hands.
Yes, I know. What is the estimated time of finishing?
Yeah.
The completion. I mean, where are we?
It's a living document.
Yeah, it's probably, probably backburner after where we got going this next couple of years, honestly.
And that's a problem.
Yeah. Okay. To summarize, we want to talk about parking apps and nothing else. All right, I think we're finished with that. And we get to the public hearing on, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing and presentation on the CIP, the Capital Improvement's Plan. Seeing none, no public. I am going to open and close that part of it, meaning we can move on to approval of minutes and this master will get you very shortly, I believe. Because I think we're just going to do the, we just did the public part, and then we're going to do the work session right after the meeting.
That's fine. If you want the presentation at the work session, I can roll it into one.
Which would you prefer? I think you're flexible. I had imagined we would do it all at the work session. If I misunderstood, then.
Totally fine, as long as it works for the planning director and the formal process and law for the record.
Item eight does appear fairly short in terms of the reports and the approvals.
I didn't want to like start and then go into a minute, meeting minutes and stuff. So, but I, it's not a big deal.
Well, I think the approval of minutes will have to wait, because my brain has been jackhammered for far too long. And I have the January 16, 2018 minutes listed, but what was in the package were the minutes from Monday for December.
Right.
All right, so we will continue that. Do I need a motion to continue the minutes?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any planning commission reports? Hearing none. Planning director's report.
I will make this brief in light of the conversations yet to come tonight. First item, oh, I don't want to forget, something distributed to you at the dais was a printout on the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act. This is a handout that goes over requirements for meeting notices.
A conflict of interest.
But this we got. But this, we got all this online.
Correct.
And then give you a paper copy just in case.
So I just want to make you aware of that distribution. Uh, let's see, items on the, listed on the agenda, item A, uh, the organization chart for the newly formed Community Planning and Economic Development Services Department. Uh, there are handouts, uh, that I can provide.
Are you at the top? I am not. At the top?
Jim's still at the top.
The people of our city are always at the top.
This should look fairly similar, uh, to what the group is used to. You'll see that there are now, uh, there are four groups, economic development, planning, zoning, and building safety. Prior to this reorganization, planning, zoning, and building safety were organized under a single department, uh, and that was the Department of Development Services, and Jim Snyder served as the director of that group. Uh, moving into this phase where the city's thinking about redevelopment at the West Falls Church, uh, area, uh, and a need to take projects from conception to opening, uh, the idea was to reorganize so that economic development, which was previously a standalone office, uh, which had at full staffing, a staff of three, and presently had a staff of one, uh, as a way to get them more support, was to bring them into that same umbrella. Uh, and so now, uh, that's Becky Witzman, who's been in the economic development office, uh, but also now Lee Goldstein, who is serving as a consultant, uh, specifically, uh, supporting that West Falls Church project. Uh, those two staff members have also brought, have been brought under this umbrella of Community Planning and Economic Development Services. Uh, this is already paying dividends at the staff level. Uh, those two economic development staffers are attending our weekly planning meetings. Uh, it's allowing for a lot more coordination about projects such as, uh, the opening of Target, uh, the redevelopment of the Aldi, uh, site. Uh, it's allowing for a much greater level of communication on a regular basis across those offices. Uh, and when I said from inception to opening, what this means is that from those first conversations with economic development about a potential project, those can be carried through the planning and entitlement phase, through zoning approvals, and ultimately through, uh, tenant fit-outs with building safety staff. So there's a, uh, continuity of project management with this reorganization.
Okay, great.
Uh, next item, uh, Founder's Row, there was a, a question from one of the planning commissioners about what is the status of Founder's Row.
And that came from a neighbor.
I understand that this is, uh, the, the group's top priority project. They are trying to move this forward. They've already reached out to us at the staff level about the possibility of, uh, dual submission of both their, uh, re-entitlements through the special exception amendment, uh, along with their building plans at the same time. So they are committed to, uh, developing this, and they want to move this quickly as they can.
They want to do special exception and site plan simultaneously?
And building plans.
And building plan.
They think they have a, a, a product that will be compelling, uh, and acceptable to the community, and they're, uh, willing to put, uh, some action behind that by submitting their plans.
What's their timeline for submission?
They're still working that out, uh, in terms of, uh, what are the specific needs to get through the entitlement process? Obviously, they don't want to submit half of a package, uh, so they want to make sure they've got the whole thing to submit at one time.
So, I mean, if you were going to do a ballpark, would you say, like, mid-spring, like, April or May or something, or?
Uh, I think they want to come in sooner than that.
Oh, really? Okay.
Now, are they back to first reading on the special exception, if they've lost the hotel?
Yeah, they would be at the, the re-entitlement process for special exception, yeah.
And so we'd be starting all over again.
Yeah, I think what you've got at this point, though, is that you've already got a substantial conversation in the community about the look and feel of the building, where the major entrance is oriented, uh, what involuntary concessions have been negotiated.
I mean, if the main, if the main, if the main topic is, hey, we don't have a hotel, we have this other thing, then it will be hopefully-
Shorter. What, we three years in this thing now?
It was three years.
All right, Downtown Plaza.
Downtown Plaza, uh, just to make you aware that there was, uh, uh, some concerns raised by surrounding property owners about the layout of the park, uh, and impacts it may have on public parking spaces, uh, already used in the area. Uh, and so a redesign of the park is being considered that we use a smaller footprint. The reason I'm raising it in the planning director's report is that the planning commission had reviewed and given site plan approval, uh, to the planned park layout, so this may come back to the commission as a site plan amendment.
This that we talked about tomorrow night to the TV.
That closes, uh, the items on the planning director's report, unless there are any other questions.
How's City Hall looking?
I can turn, uh, and update, uh, that over to the deputy city manager.
It is looking like a construction site.
That's what I was saying, looks messy.
We moved out the West Wing today, so, um, all of the permits, building counter, and CPED staff, the new chart, uh, HR and TPW are there. Uh, construction's going full steam. They got the back torn up, and they're ready to, um, start pulling out the cooling towers, and they started demoing West Wing.
Are there any cool historical artifacts that you guys are just throwing out that I would want to keep in my basement?
Like dead bodies and-
Not those kinds of stuff.
Um, things that were, uh, historical and special, like all of the artwork.
You'd be surprised what I would-
The stuff have been stored. We have stored and saved a lot of the woodworking chambers, so we can kind of replicate that.
Like pews and stuff, or there's all?
No, keeping all of those, so they-
They're so comfortable.
Now, you can go to Quinn's if you want and bid on the chandeliers, because we're auctioning those off.
They were very good.
But most of the stuff, um, is being reused right now at 400. Staff were very adaptable and patient, and, uh, by the end of the day, the Xerox machines and the IT was up, and the phones were there. And I met four people looking for permits at 300 Park Avenue, and we got them over to 400 North Washington. The rest moves in April. We are working on parking, and we are doing off-site parking arrangements by April with our church partners. In terms of your references earlier, uh, so far, tour and the fire department willing to work with us at a, a collaborative effort with no cost one church wants to charge, so we're working through that. Uh, and until soccer season starts, we are using Madison Park parking lot. And of course, we have per zoning ordinance spaces on 400 North Washington, but we want to keep most of that open for public, and we have a lot of city vehicles. So, it is progressing. We got to one big milestone, um, and it's going full steam. And right now, we're on schedule to still wrap up by the end of the year and have everybody back.
Cindy, uh, it's probably a little bit too late to ask this question, but, uh, staff getting any help moving stuff?
Yeah, we hired movers as part of the CIP project, so staff didn't need to pack, pack the boxes, and then they arrived at 400 and get to unpack boxes, but all the physical-
I saw a idea out there the other day, filing everything into your car.
Um, some staff have elected, well, personal stuff, they had to take back home, and staff did have personal stuff. Some staff in, um, building, uh, safety department in particular, elected to relocate stuff over that they had built at 300, over to 400, so they were authorized to relocate. But we actually had packs and movers in all weekend.
I'm all about staff.
We appreciate that. As the HR director and risk manager, I also am into that, too.
All about the staff.
And safety and workman's accounts for my school days.
All right, anything else anybody wants to talk about before we adjourn and get into the CIP? Okay, adjourned.
Staff have been doing an incredibly wonderful job on shredding where appropriate for record retention and destruction, recycling where appropriate, and scanning in and making things electronic. And I have seen a lot of, uh, Plattsby founders scanned in, and so it's been a, actually, after a 50 and a 30-year period of time, a very healthy, uh, relook of what do we have in City Hall.
And see what you've got in mimeograph.
We have identified the time capsule and have that locked in a safe, so-
Really?
Yep, because it was never buried under George Mason, because it was in a wooden box, and so it got stored in the city clerk's office. Under a sofa.
This is the time capsule for?
Um, it was a 50-year time capsule that gets unlocked in 2035. Um, and it turned out when talking to Mr. Thurston that, uh, it existed, but it was never buried because it was a wooden box, and nobody had had a steel box.
So it's just been, like, sitting under somebody's desk for?
Uh, yeah, the city clerk's sofa. It is now in a fireproof, water-resistant safe.
That's why I'm going to call the junk under my sofa. It's a time capsule.
Uh-huh.
Tell my wife that, it's my time capsule.
Gotta be careful with time capsules. Did we see that movie, The Knowing?
Okay.
So.
You are up.
With that, Chair and planning commissioners, thank you. I am glad to be back for our annual CIP planning session. There are some changes, um, that we'll highlight as we go through the process. You do have your, uh, traditional notebook, so before I jump into the, uh, presentation, I will note the organization is the same as you're used to in terms of tab and color and so forth. Nothing new there. You do have a copy of the PowerPoint from tonight, so you can use it as a reference as you wish. And then, as, uh, Lauren was mentioning earlier with the planning director's templates, I have now moved that into the same format for you all, for the initial memo. So in the front left pocket, you will have the memo for this tonight, which gives the context for the CIP in the background, uh, which is also in your notebook. Uh, it is requesting that on, uh, February 20th, uh, which is a Tuesday, that the planning commission adopt, uh, a recommendation to forward to city council via the city manager and his budget. Right now, my staff recommendation is to approve it as presented, but I will note that I have included draft motions, as I have in the past, it's just here now instead of, um, at your next meeting, with where you can, um, modify it, defer it, or deny it. I will note that on line 195, it's, um, a motion for approval based on the following justifications. I have, um, put back in there the core justifications that you had last year, assuming that some of those philosophical pieces are the same, but that was just to be a starting point for you all. That's in the memo. Um, so that will be, um, your foundation for the February 20th adoption meeting. In, after I do the presentation, some of the items that I would like to confirm with you all as part of the work session this evening, I've outlined, uh, in the staff report, starting at line 119. So after the presentation, I'll come back to that. It's just to basically tee up what, how you'd like the work session scheduled on the 12th, and any policy issues.
Is this a short, it's a time span, this is short?
It's a short and quick time span, yep.
So, can I ask a-
We have other fish to-
Can I ask a question? We, we have a meeting next week, is that true?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to put it on my calendar.
You too.
There's a special meeting of the planning commission scheduled for next week. I believe that was in your calendar that you all saw last, uh, meeting.
And that is designed as a work session for the CIP, because it is a short window to give you adequate time. After the presentation tonight, I'll look for direction on still holding that meeting, and what topics you would like, and which staff, um, we can have available for you.
Well, I mean, there's not going to be that much. We, we've sort of allocated this year.
Yeah, sure.
I think we can term this one, this year, as try as the next.
Part of the reason for that, and I'll get into it, is what you did see the CIP in July for an amendment in which we put $117 million high school project into it, so, um, and we're implementing a lot of projects. But there are some new things here based on needs, and I'll call your, your attention to that. So with the, um, presentation tonight, we'll do an overview, we'll talk schedule, give you-
Sorry, we're, we're, are we meeting just normal time, 7:30, that, the time of this meeting is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Nope. Um, we'll do the financial status and talk about projects, and as I mentioned at the end, confirm this work session, and I'll be glad to answer any questions and comments, so I can be prepared. Want to highlight a few of the great things we have accomplished in the last year, as well as what we have, uh, in process. So on this slide, you'll see, uh, the voting equipment, Westmoreland Stormwater. Uh, we've done a study analysis of the traffic signal timing, so we can improve that.
Come on your synchronization.
Traffic that we were talking about. Yep. And we have been successful with a couple of our neighborhood traffic calming programs, and the, the excerpt or graphic I have there is off of the website that kind of shows active projects in process. And if you go all the way through, I just did a portion, it'll show what's in the queue, just to give a sense of what we've accomplished. As we had last year, we have started the CIP snapshot, and so in your notebook, under tab one, you will have the full update. That starts on page 110. Yes, 110, thank you. So here's just a excerpt of it, it's still using the green, yellow, red. Glad to say there's no red, so there's nothing stopped. There are a couple cautions, either for timing easement acquisition, um, and one blue. So this is updated every quarter, and it'll always be in the CIP. It's an easy way to check on all the projects that we have going now, because what's before you is the things going forward, so it doesn't necessarily reflect, when we're talking about money and new projects, what's in process. We did unveil last fall an interactive project map.
I'm in the first tab, and it's 110.
And so I've highlighted the website address there. It's very, um, informative and helpful for citizens, and be glad to link in and walk you through if you want. Uh, but given the hour, I'll just leave that up there, and we can talk about it for a future meeting. But you can go to a map, see an area you want to know about. If it's heart colored, click on it, it'll take you to a quick summary of what's happening, link you right to the website, so then you can get the picture and all the details. So it's a great resource for the community for knowing what's in our CIP as we work on the already adopted and stuff going forward. So we keep on there, things that have been completed, in progress, and coming up, so that, um, community has a good sense of the CIP. Things we have in progress are similar to some of the you've seen last year, because these things take time to implement. Van Buren is fully under construction. In fact, the bridge is actually gone, and the road is closed, and, um, the new, uh, underpinning is getting put in. South Washington undergrounding, um, is progressing very well. Um, our city part is there for conduits, and Dominion's now coming in for utilities. Washington Gas will follow thereafter, and then we'll be able to move into Streetscape. That is a multi-year project. So rehab continues. We also are continuing to do traffic signal work. Uh, Columbia and North Washington is one where we're looking to do the mastheads, pedestrian improvements, and then get the traffic signals off the Dominion poles. Bike share is progressing, and, uh, contract procurement right-of-way locations, and Paul and I are voting for May 2018 to have stations on the ground.
How is the new type of, I was down in DC, I was down there-
The dockless ones, or, do you want to comment to that fall?
Or interfering, or is that going to be the thing of the future, and this is going to be the thing of the past?
So city staff has certainly been, been watching the experiences that other places are having with, with what are called dockless bike share stations, the idea that the bike can be, uh, checked out from anywhere and left anywhere.
Yeah, all over DC.
Yes, uh, so, uh, obviously, with any new, um, infrastructure, there are benefits and, and, and there are costs. Uh, some of the negative impacts that people are seeing is, are, are bikes littered, uh, in certain places, so they're left at awkward spaces and sidewalks, or directly in front of, uh, building entrances and egresses. Uh, sometimes they're being thrown into streams or put on tops of trees, um, that when they're seen as free, people don't take as much care of them. Uh, on the flip side, there are a lot of benefits, that they might provide areas that otherwise aren't served by, uh, a dedicated dock system like Capital Bike Share. Uh, a lot of the, uh, experts in bike sharing are seeing this as an opportunity for, uh, a benefit to both uses that, uh, where Capital Bike Share or a dock system might carry the bulk of bike share riders, it may be that a dockless system, uh, could serve some of those other areas.
Silver Spring, where I work, they have, like, three companies that are doing it.
Same thing, they're, they're all different color.
It's just sloppy. I mean, I, like, I, I'm not saying it doesn't have transportation benefits, but they have not worked out how they interact, or, or society hasn't figured out proper behavior. It, it really looks unorganized. I'm not a fan of that.
Old telephone pole days, you know, 100 years ago, you have 15 telephone companies putting wires on.
Yep, absolutely.
So I wonder, like, how long is it going to be before locality start to do something about it?
Yeah.
One of the structures that I've seen other municipalities using is that they are, uh, issuing licenses to operate, uh, dockless bike share systems, and that the continuance of those licenses is based on good civic behavior, so they're working into the license agreement requirements or commitments from the companies to, to clean up the bikes, although obviously, that's, that's an operating cost that the companies have to bear, and how quickly can they respond? So I think, I think, uh, as these things play out in other cities, there's an opportunity to learn best practices, and that may be something that comes to fall schedule later time.
For us, right now, I think this gives us continuity with our partners around and keeps the Streetscape- keeps the Streetscape and our right-ofways the way the community and you all have designed it.
We are seeing membership in Capital Bike Share as a major benefit to the user, that this is one of the few systems, aside from Omata, it is the other transportation system that stretches uniformly across the region. So one membership in Capital Bike Share allows you to ride in the future in Falls Church, and Tysons, and Reston, and Old Town, and Arlington, and DC, and Silver Spring, and Prince George's County. You can ride on any system, and if you have a yearly membership, which I think is $90 a year, it's an unlimited number of rides, up to 30 minutes throughout the entire region.
Yeah, I like the direction we're going.
And we're excited, and we're planning for spring to be able to do some delivery.
That's the plan, is we're still looking at a spring rollout.
For a bunch of stops or just one initially?
What's going forward is probably a two-phase installation. Phase one will be the spaces where the city had control of property rights to move forward. Phase two will be where there needs to be further negotiation on easements and right-ofway acquisition.
There will be multiple stations.
I think we're looking at about 13 stations.
Something also along this line, for our retreat, an update of timelines for all these things. I don't want you to like hijack this, I'm sorry, but there are so many other things that are, all the stuff that's ongoing, you know, South Washington Street, that for our retreat, it'd be really good to have all those little bit in-depth explained as to what's going on and when it's happening.
That should be doable, and I could walk with Paul. Council has asked for the same thing, because it's hard to keep track what's in design, what's in construction. You get the snapshot, that's all it is. So we're working on a massive schedule. Of all CIP projects, it would be general government and schools. The timing for when we would take it to council should align pretty closely with your retreat date you talked about this evening. Also in progress is Mount Danielle Elementary School. That's the picture on the top right, Larry Graves turf. Agreement's being worked out with Fairfax County, so that's progressing. Cherry Hill Park, as many of you have seen, is well underway. This is just a sample of the marketing materials, but we'll be unveiling shortly, letting people play in a full ribbon cutting in spring.
People play, they already play, so.
I know, they already play. We have officially asked, because it hasn't had a safety inspection from our building safety department.
You better get on it, because.
To not be on there, but no matter what, every weekend, the caution tape is rolled over by all the strollers, but.
They just moved, so give them a break.
Exactly.
I understand what you're saying. Just not stop people from playing.
Not all of the ADA accessible equipment had been installed, so we needed to finish that out, but we're very exciting, and it's great to see so many people enjoying it and looking forward to it. Big Jimnies Park is in its design, that's initial conceptual plan there that you all have been briefed on. And as you asked about City Hall, Public Space and Safety Improvements is well underway, and there's a sample of Chambers on the left. And pleased to say that all of the asbestos in the center core is now removed out of City Hall, and West Wing will be happening shortly. And the front is the entrance. George Mason has been saved and properly secured, along with the time capsule that was never under him, and the fuse. As you all have talked with many of your discussions, the comp plan, the CIP is the implementation of council vision, so that's a visualization of that. And the CIP that's presented before you this evening is compliant with the recently updated vision, the comp plan updates, comp plan of 2005, and the chapters that have been updated. The area plans that you have been discussing this evening, I was pleased to change that number from three adopted to four, and so progress has been made since I presented this last evening. We are complying with the 2017 policies, which I'll outline a little bit more detail later on, and I do note that council is working on amending that so that it can, we can address our once-in-a-lifetime generational big debt issuance and comply with bond needs. We are continuing to meet very important goals of reinvesting in our infrastructure. I will highlight that we have changed this to a six-year CIP instead of a five-year CIP. I'll talk more about that in a minute. So we are prioritizing these over six years, working to maintain our financial strength, continue to have sustainable dedicated funding for our transportation and grants match, and of course, working forward now on implementing the George Mason High School facility and West Falls Church Economic Development Strategies, where last year, the CIP, when I presented to you in February, was, we need to figure out and establish that. So we have made significant progress in that area with, of course, a lot more work to do. So, we did switch, as you know, to a biennial CIP cycle, so I wanted to update a little bit where we are in that effort this year. One change is switching to a six-year CIP, but I've also included a 10-year look ahead. So if I could ask you just to look for a moment under tab three to page 3-2, you'll be able to see what that looks like. So we have a six-years on the one-year cycle, then we're going to total it up to the six years for you. So the core CIP is a six-year look. Council had asked for a 10-year sort of look ahead, so after that, we do a four-year range of 2025 to 2028, starting to tee up what are the things we see in the out years, so that we're starting to plan CIP for the long view at a 10-year window. This is the first year we've undertaken that, so I think next year, you'll see more in those out years, and the 10-year will be a little more robust and more reflective of the needs. But this was a way to pick up in particular TJ Elementary School, because that's the next big, really big facility, and it wasn't showing up in the five-year window because it was outside the five-year window. So we'll talk about that a little bit more, but wanted to highlight the six-years instead of five. That also aligns with all the transportation grants. They're on a six-year cycle, so we were always missing in the CIP an out year of the transportation funding, and so this works much better for staff planning. This year would and should be an odd year, because it's 19, and so theoretically, it's not new projects. You'll see that we do have some new projects in the six-year CIP, but not in 19. That was due to needs with schools, West Falls Church Economic Development, Transportation, and Sewer Projects, and also a park development. So there were other priorities and needs that brought new projects into the CIP, but they are in out years. A few highlights for the new CIP project is park development in FY 2022. That is for house demolition and park development for the property known as Fellow's Property, which council has initiated acquisition for. For Mary Ellen Henderson Middle Schools, there's two funding asks in 2021 and 2026 from the school board of $650,000, and that is for roof replacement and carpet and vinyl flooring. And then the place chief has put in a request for 2020 for $400,000 for public facility security, so we can have systems of card access, panic alarms, and cameras in all of our facilities. Right now, we're redoing it for being in City Hall, but we don't have a consistent system that also dispatch can monitor. We have sort of a little bit of hodgepodge in some end-of-life items. There is pay-go money for facilities, and I noted all so that it was clear that this is general government and schools. We need $3.2 million over the 10-year planning horizon. This would include the Mary Ellen Henderson piece, but not the big Thomas Jefferson. This is our regular reinvestment into facilities. But with what's available, pay-go in the CIP, it leaves $1.2 million not funded. There is an increase in the FY 19 operating budget of $510,000 for what's, we're currently working on to propose to council and march by the city manager. That is reflected in the CIP, because we need to identify what of our 30% cash goes to Omata to draw down our 30%. So I just wanted to call out that because Omata costs are going up, we are building into the proposed budget a little bit more than a penny again, and so that is in the base budget, and that then allows us to leverage grant money, which is the important piece that I end that slide with, that we need to maintain in order to leverage those dollars. Highlight the utilities upfront, since they're enterprise funds, and they're self-sustaining. The sewer has $4 million to continue the rehab of the sewer lines, $4.4 million for transportation improvements. The new project is $7.8 million to capacity. That's for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project, because we need to increase capacity in order to do that. It will mostly be offset by the developer fees. No rate increase proposed for the sewer program, but it does need to be analyzed, because it's been about seven years since the rate structure's been reviewed, so that'll happen over this next year. For stormwater.
Does that include the increase of capacity that we need in the Alexandria?
Yeah, that's in the treatment plants, the 4.4.
Okay, there it is. Okay, thank you.
Good question. Stormwater, no rate increase proposed, so it remains at about $250 per year for the average home, unless you do things on your property to get credits. And then there is $7 million put in using the fee to implement projects from the watershed management plan. Over the next year, Public Works is going to be reviewing and updating that plan, because many projects have been accomplished, and so we need to look to see what needs to be done for federal mandate compliance, but then also just community needs.
Just an idea there, all the projects that are being done out of this money need to be, have better PR, so people know that indeed, this stormwater money is being used. It's not glamorous, but they need to have a report on it.
Well, and plus, I mean, Mr. Stevens mentioned it earlier, there is now a grant program from some of those funds that homeowners can use to do improvements on their own property that Vifis is doing with the city, it's a partnership.
Which requires no increase in the stormwater fee.
Yeah, right, right.
But if you take it, you gotta go tell us where it's going.
Yeah. I'm asking that to Public Works, because as part of doing the update to the watershed management plan, they need to report what was done, and then we can do some messaging.
It's not glamorous, but, you know, it is not visible.
They definitely, I mean, they do have, they do have to list everything, so they have it. It wouldn't be that hard to put together.
Yeah, but it needs to go out to the public.
I'll make a note of that. So for this summary, and all of the utilities are more fully described under your tab 10. For FY 19, there's $1.4 million, which is in the sewer program, nothing specifically for stormwater. And then in the out years, you'll have $7 million put into either capacity or redoing the lines. There is, in the out year, a $10 million grant proposed, 2024, for Four Mile Run, which would go a long way for implementing the North Washington POA and dealing with the Four Mile Plan concept there. Moving into general fund and transportation, this is the summary of what we're looking at for those. Nothing this year for information technology. For the public safety in FY 19, that's the fire station. In the sixth year, it's the fire station as well as the security program. For public facilities, we'll show you what the facility reinvestment money is, but that's $200,000 in cash, so the remainder of that is the construction money for the library. Council just approved the A&E contract, so the design work is underway. Nothing in environmental. Right now, our environmentalist stormwater project, so that's in the enterprise fund. Transportation is not in your notebook this evening. I will present that next Monday at the work session, assuming we hold that. If not, it'll be on the 20th, but I have planned to do it next Monday. You will receive it prior to that work session. Transportation, as you know, is really complex, a lot of grants, and we've done a lot of all the financing and everything sorted out, but with City Hall and the move, all the departments I moved were the key staff that I have working on transportation, so it wasn't quite ready where we felt comfortable.
It will include such things as repaid pavement and stuff like that.
Yeah, pavement, bridges, traffic signals will be the infrastructure, and then we continue to have projects under the various area plans and neighborhood traffic. It is, I'll have the dollar amount in a minute, but it's.
Be interested in hearing what gas company will be pitching in for, if anything. It's screwed up our streets.
I know. The grant money we have is not used on residential streets, so then we just have to go back after Washington Gas, because they are bonded and they had to get a right-ofway permit, but with the winner, it's going to be challenging. So the total here is without the transportation, which is why I've left it in red. And I also did a footnote that the, everybody goes, where's the high school money, and that's in 18, so it's not showing up here, because we did the amendment, as you know, in July of last year for this fiscal year. So it's already appropriated, so it's not showing up in the going-forward CIP, so I just footnoted it. This is the map that shows where all the projects are. That's also under tab three. Of course, we have 22 facilities for the general government side. Many of them are prime, and then some are ancillary like these that are just critical for implementation. And some of the key things for facilities to highlight, there's a total request of $3.2 million over the 10 years, and as I noted earlier, $2 million is available and $1.2 is unfunded. The public security system and the fire station. The fire station is $223,000 for FY 19. The out years is the minimal amount for the IGA agreement, inter-jurisdictional agreement. They have just under $1 million now that they are, finally have the design for the HVAC, and we should see that deployed this year. They didn't have.
But it go away. Every year, we've got fire station.
Yep.
I think they always have new equipment, for sure.
Yeah, every year, by the agreement, we have to provide $150,000 every year for capital reinvestment, and we're still catching up. Doors are done, windows are done, but we gotta get the HVAC, and now their generators end to life, and their boilers failing, so it's a heavily-used building 24 by 7, and we've discussed how it was built before.
We've discussed that before.
Yep, so we're trying to fix that.
Yeah.
The library is progressing. It is in its design phase. There was five town hall meetings last week, and a lot of community engagement on the design. So the picture here remains the conceptual design, not the work of BKV, the current architects. That'll be refined as it goes through the process. Still looking to address the 20-year needs. The Board of Trustees did elect the west option, which brings the building out towards Virginia, so that's why you only see one concept plan this year instead of two. So no change in terms of dollar amount, we're just pursuing the implementation. Kim Callahan, as you know, since she's provided an update to you and is Public Works Project Manager, so she's working on the items needed to come back to the Planning Commission related to site plan variances, waivers. We're working on shared parking agreements and a library-specific TDM plan as we did for City Hall. So we'll have more information as the design unfolds. For schools, we do have, of course, the joint campus planning for up there at the high school and middle school, as you all are well aware. The school is continuing to refine, the program needs construction. They've had the first phase of the procurement and received five preliminary A&E respondents, so they're continuing through that process. So you all are more directly involved in that than I am, so this is just to note that it's there. The school board did request the $650,000 for Mary Ellen Henderson. You'll see when I show you the summary chart, it is in green, which is our only if funding is identified. There is no funding identified for this yet, and we will be working with the schools. The types of projects that are being asked for cannot be debt financed, because they're not bondable for tax-exempt for the roof replacement, the floor, and carpet, so we'll need to look for pay-as-you-go funding, or if there's any other way to roll it into the larger project. TJ is in the out years to add the additional tower and build. TJ is in the out-years to add the additional tower and building. That's the 11.7 million. By 2027, you'll see in the project sheet, is when they're anticipating the enrollment needs of 600 to 660 more students. And this is necessary because of the student cap at the Mount Daniels. So they're looking at the alternative at TJ. And just to note again, so when the public sees this and wonders where the high school is, it's already appropriated. Transportation to come later. For Rexon Parks, the Recreation Park Advisory Board is actually meeting this Wednesday. They had a meeting cancellation, so they haven't adopted their CIP projects that they're aware of and staff submitted. So I anticipate they will be approved, but they haven't formally been approved yet. So they're reviewing that and ensuring for master plan contingencies. But there are 20, FY 2020, 600,000 trails was in the CIP last year, so I anticipate that will stay. They are looking to replace under park master plan, Beerman Park Playground for FY '21 at 300,000, and the tennis court slice at 2024. And they're working with Kate Walker for lead in energy lighting as they undertake that process.
Right.
There also is, since we're going into the sixth year and the 10-year cycle, they did look at long-term reinvestment into the turf fields. As we know, they have to be upgraded and reinvested in every 10 years, so they're looking at the high school again in 2023 and Larry Graves, which is a project being done now around 2027. Those are the dollar amounts. And they continue to ask for funding to adequately have available to acquire open space when opportunities come up. Again, it's a 1 million. It is not funded, so you'll see it noted as green. Rexon Park put it in for FY '19. I had to put it out till one year because if it's not funded, you can't appropriate it in FY '19. So there's no funding, so we can't appropriate it. All right, so for the highlights on the financials, this is one-year FY '19, just the general fund, so you can see a large bulk of that is going to transportation and public facilities. In this case, that public facilities for FY '19 is the library. For the five-year, six-year look, I gotta retrain myself, six-year look for the general fund, transportation is the largest piece of that pie still, with public facilities larger, and that is because it's picking up some of the facility reinvestment. That does not have TJ yet because that's still in the out-year. And then this is the sixth year for all funds, so the difference here is the utilities of sewer and stormwater. On the slide, this will be a little hard to read, you do have it in tab 3 on page 3-2, oops, sorry, 3-1. What I wanted to highlight here is this is the funds for all categories. So if you look at the top, it's general fund, school and transportation. Looking at the sixth year, that's 88,000, almost 89,000 million. Let me get the right digits, 89 million asleep. So that is a really big CIP without the high school, 117 million, because that's already appropriated. This is just the six-year window. What is very positive about that six years is of the grants, 58 million of that 88 million is grant-funded. That's transportation. There is debt, obviously, and a fair amount of PEGO. That PEGO is going towards facilities, but the bulk of that is our contribution to WAMADA. That's allowing us to get the grant drawdown of the 30%, and then we leverage it to get that 58 million. For sewer, you can see the 17 million on the sixth year, and then for the stormwater, 17, and there's that 10 million for the four-mile run in the out-years. You can see where we're starting to populate the four years for the 25 to 28, and then see a 10-year. So we're starting to fill in that piece to get to the longer view. The CIP that is presented to you tonight is under the current financial policies, but it is not compliant, as you'll see in a moment, because of the 117 million. Council has been reviewing and is scheduled to adopt early spring the financial policy amendments that will allow for some exceptions for that once-in-a-generation-type project, where you could go up to 20% instead of the 12, but you have certain requirements to bring it back to compliance.
They have to come back to this CIP.
They are to have it adopted before they adopt their budget, so. You can adopt it even though we know it's not in compliance, but I didn't want you to not have the facts to that basis, because it's been happening at a council discussion. I wanted to tie it to the CIP. That's what it looks like when you put it to a chart. The blue is existing, the red would be new, and so you can see there is a period of about five years that it'll be above policy. Once the financial policies are adopted as currently drafted, then we'd be back in compliance, and then once the economic development piece is confirmed and we know what cash flow may come from that, then that will assist as well. This is the slide that we saw in July and all the community work with council that shows what the full debt is, which includes the high school. It includes all of the items in this proposed CIP. In this light blue up here is about $5 million on average the debt service builds accumulates in the out-years. So the CFO, Ms. Bawa, projected and planned for 5 million each year added because you gotta keep reinvesting so that we're not in the same boat where everything came due at one time. So for financial modeling, we're looking at 5 million, and that's also why we're starting to build out the 10-year. And as you can see, we already have some projects that could be applied to those dollar amounts. On the unassigned fund balance reserve, this slide shows, describes the existing policy. This is our history for use of unassigned fund balance. So you can see in the 2009, 10 where we were out of compliance, and that was the economic downturn and the loss of the water sale return on investment, then reinvested and got the fund balance back up. And now we're pretty much aligned with policy and actuals. Anything that is above by policy goes into reserves for capital projects.
Aren't they considering a change to that, too?
Yes. They are looking to shift it to available fund balance, so it combines more funding sources, and this is the one where if you have a high, large debt issuance, then you'd have to have higher than 17% in order to assure you could pay your debt, because debt always gets paid first. So that, the debt service and the fund balance are part of the policy change.
But that will be changed, this is to the old.
This is to the old.
So if the changes will get a new chart.
Yeah.
Or new colors.
Yeah, it'll be updated. Now, the timing of council action will be after the Planning Commission's action. However, always in May, I try to circle back and let you know the outcome of any changes at council. So this is what the CIP that's before you looks like against the current policies. For the 17, we actually can just keep it at 17. But we cannot achieve the debt service. You'll see we're going above the 12%, and it goes longer out, but this is just for the six years, but in the full CIP, Ms. Bawa has modeled it farther. So this is what we have to address in the financial policy amendment, which our bond counsel and financial analysts have been advising counselor, and there's clearly ways in which you can do it that meet best practices. And so it's not like we're the only ones experiencing this. As we wrap up this presentation, I wanted to call out some of the challenges and opportunities that we would have as we look at this CIP and as we look out over the next six years. It is ambitious, it is being responsive to past and current budget guidance, vision, critical infrastructure needs. We've worked hard to align it to the phases, to staff resources, but it is ambitious, so we are working people at, you know, full tilt. There still is a need to look at a better long-term master planning and funding plan for facilities, equipment and vehicles, and we need to continue to keep the focus on transportation and leveraging those grants and working hard to manage the WAMADA budget pressures. Additionally, some of the policy things would be to ensure compliance with the policies. So while this may not be compliant with current policies, we certainly, as a community, need to bring the policies into compliance. We need to keep the long-term focus. Do recommend that we keep a dedicated PEGO funding, which we do not have right now, like grants and WAMADA again.
The whole grant process has, we've gotten so much out of it. Again, but it's so time-consuming and such a specific skill for writing those. Sammy, does the school board have anybody writing grants for stuff? They should. They really should. And, you know, and even if we need more staff people to do grants, that is worth the money. Would be something to put on the list for, for City Council retreat. I just think it pays back enormously well.
Yeah, with the transportation staff, and if we, when we have availability of 30% in VTA, those monies can pay for staff to administer grants and write for grants. It's very hard to find that, though, for other sources, and so you're looking at local contribution. This current CIP has very little PEGO, which limits your flexibility for those type of things where you don't need to deal with debt or transportation. But we certainly have leveraged it. It is much more complex now that we're getting into federal funding, because it adds another level of complexity. So it's grant management, it's project management, and then it's also construction management, inspection in the fields, because right now, you know, we've got a lot of big projects going, so we are.
But as a city, we have a tendency to just put another hat on people instead of another person under that hat. And that, you know, I'm always concerned about the fact that we could get more and more through that. And I definitely think the schools should be doing more of that. Of course, I've said that for quite a few years.
And environmental is an area where we certainly could look at, and that is both facilities, infrastructure.
Yeah.
Some of it's challenging with General Assembly, but we'll get through it.
You look at even all the talk for all the grant stuff, we're doing a lot of the infrastructure up at the, you know, the new high school, all the big elective stuff.
Yep. For community engagement, I want to highlight a couple things. We do have the core stuff still on the website. We are accepting emails to budget at Falls Church, so if we receive any CIP comments that comes to my attention. We'll continue with the unveiling of this to do media coverage and put it up on the website and so forth. For FY '19, I did want to highlight a bit of a change just because of staffing resources and priority focus. We've really focused on current projects and near-term planning, and of course, the high school and West Falls Church. So have not done a separate amount of town hall, public meetings or surveys related to the CIP because it's running parallel and it's confusing to the citizens, because there's already a lot of town halls and this, the other stuff seems to be the priority. So my recommendation is, I haven't done a survey, and I don't recommend we do a survey till next year. Under your direction from last year, however, you had directed me to do FY '19, so I did want to acknowledge that to the Planning Commission, just given the lay of the land. And town halls will be combined with the operating budget, so we will do CIP stuff during the budget process. Hopefully, that will allow some of the school and economic development pieces to have unfolded. And then I put in, just for the resource, your notebook format, this is the schedule we've been discussing, and so this, when this goes on the website, people know how to find me if they have questions. And then it is up to questions. In your memo, I kind of outlined some things that I wanted to highlight, much of which is covered in the presentation in terms of the sixth year, the snapshot, the schedule. And so I guess the key things left would be confirming the work session for next week, yes or no? What specific projects would you like a deeper dive into? For sure, I need to present the transportation because we haven't had that, and if there's any financial or other policy things that you would like to talk about. And with that, I'll close my presentation and look forward to a dialogue.
All right. Well, thank you very much, as always. To answer your first question, I think we need to have the work session next week. It'll give us a chance to have some time with this document. And to address it when a little bit less tired.
Thank you. I concur and appreciate that, but certainly you're all.
So in terms of questions, people have immediate questions. I mean, obviously, we're going to talk about transportation. I sort of made a joke in the beginning of this about the lack of flexibility on this CIP because of these large-scale funding projects, but I guess my question to you would be, we go through this every year, so each year you submit it and you say, I recommend you accept it as proposed. But because of the commitments we've had to make this year, or that's included in the CIP, the one in FY '18 with the high school, and then the library this year and all the other projects, do you see there being flexibility to move? I'm not even suggesting I know where I would want to move it, but I went into this meeting thinking we were going to be pretty restricted. Is your sense that that's, we're right up against it and we have, there's things to be talked about and decisions to be made, or this is really where we're at?
I think for FY '19, this is really where we're at, for that appropriation. For '20, you could, we've got things, debt service plans. So for example, there's the facility security or the park master plan trails. So that's a million dollars that we've programmed and budgeted for that can be afforded in the debt service policy, including the high school. So you could elect, that's not the priority, we think it should be put elsewhere, and we can move it. Obviously, what is here is staff's recommendation.
Sure.
Priorities, but that doesn't preclude. So there's some flexibility there. There is 1.2 million in PEGO, which is intended for the facility reinvestment, the reinvestment of all the other facilities we own for roofs, HVAC and so forth. That is the only PEGO in the CIP, and you'll see below that, and I'm looking at page 3-2 under tab 3, a lot of green where there's also facility money that's documented as needed and not funded. So Planning Commission could elect to assign that PEGO to another project. In the transportation, which you'll get next week, we have tried to align that directly to the POAs and core infrastructure, but there, and grants that we've applied for, so you could elect and say that's not the priority, we should focus here, and that would be recommended to the city manager and council. Utilities, I don't see any flexibility because they're core infrastructure and capacity things we need.
The city facilities reinvestment, the PEGO portion is what? I mean, I'm looking at this 200,000 per year.
I was going to ask that, like, how do we determine what is pay-as-you-go and what is grant revenue offset?
Right.
Okay, so under the financial modeling, what the CFO and city manager were able to carve out was 200,000. So they said to me, Cindy, you have $200,000 for the CIP. These facility reinvestments cannot be debt financed, so the only way we're going to pay for them. So the only way we're going to pay for them is with cash, and so historically, that's where we put them, because things like your roof replacement, your HVACs, your carpeting, similar to the discussion we had on the Mary Helen Henderson Comet dark request, you can't mod them.
Right.
So that's, so basically, they said, what we think we can afford in the FY nineteen budget and what we'll propose to city council to make a decision on. Now, if council changes tax rate or reprioritize, that may go away, but right now, that's how it got to two hundred thousand. Public works staff has assessed all the facilities and itemized what needs to be done in each year. And so the total for FY twenty-one, for example, is two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Only had two hundred, so that's how the fifty-five thousand got into the green column.
Okay, so what's in the FY twenty-twenty, and what, what's the two hundred and ninety-two thousand? So it looks like we're off by two hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Yeah. What happened is there was actually unfunded in two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
But you can't have unfunded needs in your budget appropriation, so it can't have green in that column. So it's combined in twenty.
Okay. So I guess what I wonder, if they already have this list made, could we see what that list is?
Sure.
Because I'd like to know, like, so what you're being told is that we can only guarantee you two hundred thousand, and, but if you need two hundred and fifty-five thousand, you'll just have to pick some things to do and drop some.
Yes. So. So under, in, under tab six on six dash two, you have a summary, and what I can have for next week.
Yeah, I saw the summary.
Is behind that is a very detailed spreadsheet that says twenty thousand for this and fifteen thousand for that. So I can bring the, what we refer to as the spending plan.
Yeah, because I was looking at it, I was thinking along the ways that Mr. Wood does it, was like, what can we actually change? But I wondered about that being green, because I was like, is this actual stuff that should be done? I, I'd just like to see what it is.
Yep.
Yeah.
Certainly, our facility staff would say, yes, it needs to be done. And what ends up happening is they have to prioritize, and they try to keep a little play for the emergencies, so if something changes in their prioritization. It's like bringing that in detail.
Schools, awesome.
For the facility reinvestment, this is just general government.
Okay.
And what the schools did this year is they didn't do their traditional school modernization fund. What they did is target the actual facility needs, and obviously, Sammy is here, who did the detailed facility assessment. And so if you want more detail on that, we could plan for that next week as well.
I think, I mean, I think we're all, I think if there's anything we're lacking in the city, it's, it's this area, this facility reinvestment.
Absolutely.
And it puts, gets us in such trouble when everything fails at the same time.
Yep.
Yep. And so on the, I think it's the next page that we just double check.
A city that started at a certain date, everything is getting old and needs repair at the same date.
We haven't done it in the mid-fifties, in the mid-eighties, and.
Yeah.
They're all.
But that was actually the only thing I had questions on. Everything else makes sense to me. And, I mean, that makes sense to me, I just don't like it.
Yeah. So what I'll do is bring the general government facility reinvestment, and page six dash three is the Marion Henderson summary discussion, but we'll also have some additional detail for you.
So this five hundred thousand dollars for the fellows property, this is just to, turn it to a park?
Like equipment.
The acquisition money was in.
Already in there.
Yeah, so the four million is already, was in your FY seventeen CIP, and so that has already been appropriated and.
How much did we appropriate that?
Four million.
Being worked on, right? That they.
Council has authorized eminent domain and negotiating with them.
Okay.
But our original, we had the modified CIP, right?
Right.
Pushed off.
Correct. The council did not approve the modified, they approved the full CIP. So it was appropriated.
That's my lesson with all the numbers, is hmm, wish we would have stopped with modified CIP.
I know, that's what I was thinking, too, because the chart looked a lot, the bar chart with the line looks much better with the modified.
Yeah, sure, for city council.
Well, why are you doing it, Andy? You have lots of time.
Why did you, would you want the modified CIP? I know we all voted for, not all, but we, majority voted for, but.
We whacked the turf field and.
It moderated, it moderated how much we're out of alignment. So, so like, because, you know, like, now we have like seven years where we're above the line, and when we did that, we weren't, it wasn't as many years, it was only like three.
But we also didn't have an updated library or turf field.
Right, exactly. We put, we put off stuff to do it. But I just thought in the short term, I don't know if we absolutely have to have the library done right now. We, and a new library director was coming in, and I thought with a new director coming in that they might need time to regroup, because change of leadership. And I didn't think, I mean, we need the field, but I thought we, you know, sometimes we have to put off things that we like, we want. We put it off all the time.
So the money for fellows is not in anymore?
It's already appropriated.
Fellows is already appropriated, and it could be spent this fiscal year.
Got it.
That was another thing I thought we could put up.
Yeah, page nine dash one provides you the, a description, a little bit of an aerial map of what Rix and Park staff plans.
So if the negotiation is happening and it exceeds the amount that was appropriated, is that, is that a new CIP item, or how does that?
Yeah, council will either have to amend the CIP and do it from fund balance, but the, what the four million dollars was, of course, was based on our assessed value and what we were entering into the negotiation. Of course, if it can, if it has to go to court and we get a court order amount, they'd have to amend the dollar amount.
I haven't looked at it yet, but.
So that'd be interesting, just to have an update as to where that is, too.
Do you want, besides the land acquisition update, which I can provide, do you want more details on the park concept? It is in twenty twenty-two, and it's a.
Good time.
Preliminary number.
We're good.
Because they're demoing house, they got to do site plan.
And I assume they have to do a master plan, like a public master plan, like they have to do with all the parks, so.
Right, right.
So this is just, this really is a placeholder, and we have a lot of paperwork to do before we can actually do anything there.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Okay. We will save you and staff time.
Yes, please.
Please do.
Back to us in twenty nineteen or twenty years.
You know, twenty nineteen's not that far away.
Amazingly not.
I, I have a, this is sort of a random question about the traffic signal timing, which I guess someone's had. One question is, is that, is that the trenching to city halls more fiber, or is that related to city hall construction?
The trenching of the fiber is related to city hall construction and service to the whole campus. It's part of the renovation, we're moving the server and the telco room, and so we're running new conduits. But it's also tied to Verizon eliminating all their copper. And so come May, they're cutting off all the copper, and we feed a lot of our services, including police, on copper. So we've combined them all into one project and getting the proper conduits and a vault feeding into the new server room. It serves community center, gauge house, library, Aurora House, city hall.
And then my other question is, will I notice the traffic signal somehow being better when this is all done? Oh, they've, they've changed. Or are they already better?
Yeah, they're already better.
And my third question is, will we ever fix the light at Broad and Maple so that it doesn't break every week?
Public.
Actually, I have a fourth question while I'm talking about lights. I thought they were all on battery backups, but like, we had a big power failure a couple weeks ago, and both those lights weren't.
The majority of our traffic signals are on, do have battery backup, not all, and so they have to bring generators out. And Broad and Maple, the public works staff would agree with you, they have dug up, tore, brought out.
Everything that rains, I think, goes out.
Yeah.
It's weird.
First thing was lines weren't in conduit, and so they were kind of getting wet, and that wasn't working, so they replaced that, then another thing failed. It's sort of like when you do old equipment, you fix one thing, you start having, so they're working on it.
But, but my first question, which was, so the coordination signals is already improved? I don't drive around that much, so.
It is done, and we believe it's approved, and now I hear hopefully.
Now, I will tell you, I have, you know, I work at Old Town Alexandria, and I pick up my daughter on the east side of town where I live, near, you know, Oakwood, and then I have to get to the high school for her cheer practice at six fifteen, and I'm able to do it in about ten minutes. And part of it is because the lights are better now.
Awesome.
I have to pay more attention to that.
And I would just, I mean, I'd just say, I cross the city during rush hour usually ten minutes most of the time, as long as you.
I never cross the city here.
You don't.
Cross it that way, not that.
Then we also have the challenges, though, is we still have to connect with Fairfax County at Haycock and the twenty-nine at Arlington at sixty-six, so that's the continuing coordination of.
But that whole thing is, oh, that's great. But we don't want it too good, though, right? Because then people think it's easier to drive.
Oh, yeah.
It'll get worse, we'll build some worse stuff.
We, we should make it worse.
Verizon paying for any of this stuff? We always have trouble with Verizon.
Be able to hear a pindrill.
When they convert from copper to fiber, if they have a in-kind service, it automatically just shifts over. We've been working with them for two years, insisting that they were not doing their project on us and taking down radios, elevators, alarms, and they finally have delayed it. They would have charged us if they put it in the existing place to move it, so we also delayed it to align with the city hall project, so it gets, they put it in the new place and run it, so we don't have to pay to move it, so.
This whole deal with, they came up with FIOs and everything, and, you know, they weren't cooperative on that.
They're just doing regular fire, FIO, fiber, if you want FIOs, when you come off the copper, you have to pay the increased service cost. But we already had FIOs at city halls, we cannot work well without that kind of functionality with everything we do.
But all those companies do what they want. Comcast came into our commercial property and just started digging stuff up.
Let's talk about the gas.
Didn't even tell anyone about it.
Let's talk about parking apps. I don't have any other questions. Anyone else?
Nope, let's go.
Anything else we want to talk about?
Just a comment. Can you take care and sever any place to have a review of things that should have been done differently? Or that.
Like a retrospective?
Isn't that what our act rates for?
I mean, we keep talking about the, the firehouse, okay? That was not built properly. And, but there's so many other things along that line, you know, just even to sizes of parking spots.
You can look at MEH, there's a lot of things at MEH that was not done well at all.
And TJ should have been bigger.
Yeah, well, TJ should have been bigger, for sure. Well, and I also am waiting to see what happens to that concrete they pour when it was freezing on TJ's foundation for that new addition. Lifetime of that, it would be.
We're good.
Okay, so I have transportation, facilities for general government, schools, and just an update on land acquisition, but not Rix and Parks that.
Correct.
And then I'll note that we can discuss flexibility, if there's anything particular that you won't think about.
Your pen here.
Yeah. Um, can I request that we get one of these notebooks sent to Mr. Krasner?
I have one.
Okay.
So drop it off on my way.
I'm sure you'll, you'll take care of it, I just want to.
Enjoy getting it so much.
All right.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for staying till the bitter end.